Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to hit the wrong buttons or.
Get it wrong, but I mean, you see how you are.
No, no. It worked.
Cut that flag this season. All right. Yep.
Got it.
I must hit that with my eyes. But now these words know just still.
Bottom right.
Everybody on. Everybody good? All right, I'm gonna open the meeting. It's nine oh one. We're having a little trouble with our monitors up here, so it took us a minute to get everybody turned up and on. And today's meeting, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners, Thursday, August third, two thousand and twenty-three. They said it's nine oh one, and we are going to get started. The agenda today, actions will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. Avoid meeting disruptions. Please place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be. Excuse me. May be combined for consideration, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public. Any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. And the Board of County Commissioners convenes as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards as indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. This meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. And I have a roll call here. All commissioners are in chambers. Today's invocation will be given by Mitch Forster of the Mason Valley Southern Baptist Church. Please rise.
Let's pray together. So our Father in heaven, we come to you as the almighty God, the creator of heavens and earth, the one that has all wisdom and knowledge and truth. We do pray today, Lord, that this meeting will stay true to the constitution of our country, of our state, and thank you, Lord, for the freedoms that it grants us and the freedoms that you do give to us, and we pray that everything today will be done with your justice and righteousness. Pray that your truth will be in each one of our hearts. We pray, Lord, your richest blessing on all those in this county that are serving and have given themselves to better us. We do pray, Lord, that everyone that speaks will do so without fear, without argument, without always having peace in their hearts. We pray for our unity in our county in striving for our liberty and the justice and the prosperity that you do give to us. So bless this time. We give you all the praise and the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Hendrickson, would you read us in a quick praise?
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'd be seated. Item four, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It's anticipated the public participation we held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each item, each action item, but before the board takes any action. So, public comment. Yes, sir.
Name George Robinson. I would like to find the county road department for doing something at the sheriff's office, could or wouldn't do, and have control and traffic on Green and Ridge Road. It's the best it's ever been since I've lived there for eighteen years. When I closed Miller Road, it's super. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you signed in, I see.
Looks like you have one on Zoom.
Another one on Zoom. We have Amanda Bernand.
Amanda Bernand, on May thirteenth of this year, a commercial rodeo event was held on a five-acre property owned by Mr. Madera on Sand Dune Drive in Stagecoach. There's no house on this property, and Mr. Madera doesn't live there, only keeps some horses and cattle there and has rodeos. I have no issue with rodeo itself. I think it's great to utilize your animals and do this. My concerns are with sanitation, resident safety, and road damage. This was a commercial event with cattle transported in by cattle truck, participants paying at the gate, and about two hundred vehicle trips. There's no septic on Mr. Madera's property, and doing your business in the bush with that large number of people in a residential area, even if it's rural, isn't sanitary or acceptable. Direct access to Mr. Madera's property is Sand Dune Drive. However, using signs, Mr. Madera directed participants and spectators to use Silver Lane. There were about two hundred vehicle trips on Silver that day. Based on feet per second traveled, most were driving forty to fifty miles per hour on a dirt residential, non-maintained road. I was very nearly injured or killed pulling into my own driveway because I wasn't driving fast enough. A speeding truck pulling a trailer didn't slow down, slammed on the brakes at the last minute, went into a skid, and almost hit my driver's door. Vehicles were racing each other and also spinning donuts in the middle of the road. The next day, silver with hot holes, washboard, and powdery dust. I contacted code enforcement, and they said according to Lyon County Code, a rodeo requires ten acres minimum and a conditional use permit. Mr. Madera had either, and they sent him a cease letter, case number CE two thousand twenty-three dash zero one six seven. On July fifteenth, Mr. Madera had another rodeo event with the same reckless speeding, driving, road damage, and sanitation concerns. I filed a police report and notified code enforcement again. This time, they said they wouldn't be able to pursue the case because Lyon County also includes a term equestrian facilities, defined as facilities where horses are used for rentals, riding lessons, rodeos, shows, or training, where training may include horses not boarded on site. Equestrian facilities are permitted on five acres with no conditional use permit. This interpretation is inaccurate. The code doesn't say equestrian bovine facilities or livestock facilities. It says specifically equestrian facilities, uses a specific word horses twice, and doesn't say or refer to livestock or cattle at all. It specifically states where horses are used, not where livestock are. Because Mr. Madera uses cattle in his rodeo event, this is a rodeo, not an equestrian facility. A facility is also a location. Mr. Madera has an event. I'm asking you to request this case be pursued. It's unacceptable to allow large events in a neighborhood, even if rural, with no thought of sanitation, resident safety, and road damage. Requiring a conditional use permit for this type of large event would address these issues and concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm seeing none. We'll move on to item five for possible action. Review and adoption of agenda. You have any input on the changes to the agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion to, I should say, from the commissioners or the public.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we adopt the agenda I've presented.
Do I have the second? Okay, you have the motion by Commissioner Henderson and the second by Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Hendricks.
Mr. Chair, do we do public comment?
Yeah, I asked if there's any input from the commissioners or the public.
Okay.
And thank you, Susan. Getting me on that one, just in case I forget. I appreciate it. Okay, all who's in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Motion passes five zero. Item six, presentation of awards and a recognitions of accomplishments. Do we have any of those today? We have Mr. Homestead coming up.
Home set facility director for record. My admin assistant over in Dayton, Maria Alexander, is returning. She forbids me to bring her name up, but I'd be remiss in not doing so. She's finishing up twenty-seven years with the county and is her last days on the tent, so I just wanted to recognize her for being my brain, helping me along. She's the longest serving person in the facility department, and we really hate miss losing her, but we hope for her husband to have a great retirement.
And thank you. We thank her also for her service to the county, and we also are losing Amy Gettis from the library. She's in charge of the library, Lyon County Library, and we appreciate all of her service. Anybody else have anything that they?
I would just like to thank both those ladies.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Any other comments? Commissioner Keller.
I'd like to thank them too, and Maria was really, really helped out on the Parks Department, and as far as that my, helping me out with the Parks Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, recognition done on six. We'll go to seven commissioners and county magistrate reports. Let's start with Commissioner Hendricks.
I attended the Comstock Historical District Board meeting, the Carson Water Subconservancy District Board meeting, and also attended the conference in Austin, the National Association of Counties, and that proved to be very good. Made some contacts that will be beneficial to us and issues that we'll be facing later on.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also attended the National Association of Counties Conference, and I want to thank both Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Hendricks for attending. I it, I liked, I'm pleased with their passion for NACO. I think it's, it's important that we participate in national events, and I was really happy that they went, and I want to thank them for that. I sit on the National Association of Counties Public Lands Steering Committee, and we had a meeting there, and we adopted a change to our, to the county platform on public lands. It was a minor change, but it was significant. It changed the words local governments to county government because we are a county, and our position is on counties. We also reviewed twenty-one policy resolutions. We adopted nineteen of them. If anybody's interested, I have a list of them, but there's, you know, and the these resolutions, what these do, they give guidance to the staff of National Association of Counties to tell them what our priorities are, so that when they are dealing with Congress and with the administration, different agencies, this is the policy that they're representing. And I also, you know, if anybody here wants to get on a committee for the National Association of Counties, all you have to do is let the Nevada Association of Counties let Vince know, and you can get on a a policy committee. There's, I believe, seven or eight of them, different policy areas, and it's really good to have Nevada represented on those committees, so we could add Nevada's voice to the conversations that determine national county policy. And with that, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Keller.
Well, I too attended the NACO National Expo and Conference. There were a lot of steering committees we attended and a lot of panels, you know, where we had a lot of discussion, and it really helped me out getting a better understanding of some of the stuff that we apply for. Some, and I'll go over with Andrew later, because I want to get more involved with some of that stuff. I know I brought it up to him about the energy efficiency and conservation block grants. There we get seventy thousand or something like that for our county, and it's not a competing grant. We just apply for it, and those kind of things. I want us to get the money, get our county, and get the resources we want. The one committee that we did attend was Agriculture and Rural Affairs Policy Steering Committee, and that was so much information. We stopped, me and Tammy both stopped the lady, one of the panel members afterwards, and we talked for an hour, missed our next meeting just because of all the information she gave us. I talked to our local, the Nevada chairman of our Public Lands and Natural Resources Committee, and we're actually going to invite her to come and speak to us. That's how much information she had, so it was very beneficial. I also attended the Carson River Subconservancy on Zoom. And also on Tuesday, I attended, I'm trying to think of what it was called, National Night Out in Fernley, and that was, we had our emergency responders, the fire, the sheriff. The mayor was cooking hot dogs, and a lot of the public was there, and it was a well-attended event. That's it.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Attended North Lyon County Cadet fundraiser, held at Dayton Valley Golf Course, beautiful facility, obviously. But want to thank Chief Nichols and his crew for getting that cadet program up and going. Also attended friendly city council meeting. Was able to and appreciated all the work from Shayla Holmes and her crew with the poverty simulation held there in Silver Springs. Also know of at least twenty wells that have failed in the Fernley area. I'll be asking for an agenda item later during that time and in our, in our schedule here today. And finally, I had an elk tag in eastern Nevada, and I'm very grateful for our public lands. I had an outstanding hunt Monday and Tuesday, even though the weather was a little warm. And I just want to make sure we keep our public lands public. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Well, thank you. Going to the routine meetings that I've been to, but I did attend the summer camp at Smith Valley for the young kids there at the library. It was pretty interesting to have the search and rescue vehicle come over, and they gave a presentation to the youngsters, let them go out and use some of the radios, so it was pretty interesting. Stopped by and did that for a couple of hours. Then pretty much running around the Smith Valley area due to some complaints here and there and trying to get things resolved with the community and the county. Also wanted to thank the commissioners for going down to Texas and baking and sweating. I know that it was a pretty miserable time down there, but it was very beneficial, and I appreciate y'all going down and taking care of that. Now we have the county manager. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. Excuse me, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, for the record. It's been pretty busy since our last board meeting. I attended a meeting within dot, a couple of meetings within dot, but one specifically talking about the possibility of try two and economic development in the friendly area and kind of what that would look like. I attended the Lyon County Human Services Poverty Simulation. I want to thank Commissioner Jacobson for attending that. It was a really interesting event. Really want to thank the Human Services Department for putting that on, and I definitely encourage members of the board to attend those events in the future. Really interesting. Louis and I met with the Business Environmental Program up at UNR, or even a group that I've worked with in the past. Their goal is to help businesses as they move into the area, or existing businesses apply for their various environmental permits that they have to get through NDP. Or no, no cost to the business and really trying to help companies make sure that they're doing the right thing there. So it was a really good meeting there. We have, I had a meeting with Porter Group last week, got an update on our CPF requests, and so far, four of our requests have made it into made it into bill drafts. That doesn't mean they're finalized yet, but so far, the four that have made it into build rapid question, the Human Services Department Youth Mobile Crisis Team request for six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. The Human Services Rescue Program for seniors, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars. The Miller and I as the intersection realignment for two point two million dollars, and the Lyon County, there's a water main project in Dayton for two point five million dollars. So really very appreciative of our congressional delegation, Senators Cortez, Masto, and Rosen, and Congressman Amadeus for their support on those requests and for Porter Group helping us through that process. It's really good. And then Mr. Homestead might talk a little bit more about this, but the district court remodel is underway. I'm sure you've heard, so you might have noticed parking was a little bit more tight here because court is happening in the old courthouse and sometimes in the commission chambers here. So, but I did get a tour yesterday of the remodel upstairs and are almost done with demolition. I have pictures of any of you who are interested and taking a look, but it's coming on nicely, so pretty excited about that. And then finally, I actually, I got two more things, so. One, I wanted to remind everybody to all the commissioners to register for the Nevada NACO Conference in September. It'll be in Elko this year. It's the end of September, so if you plan to attend that, please register for that, and then and then the last thing I had was the code enforcement workshop. We have that scheduled, so we'll be discussing various code enforcement issues. And you know, kind of taking a look at how we, how we can address those in the future. That meeting will be on August twenty-eighth at nine AM here in local mission. With that, happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just kind of curious. In the past, yeah, we just told you we wanted to go and staff handled to get making the reservations. Can we do it that way again this year?
Sure, absolutely.
I want to go.
Okay.
I want to go.
All right, well, after the meeting, we guys can send me an email and we'll, we'll get that settled.
I want to go, but I'll be in surgery, so I'd rather go, but that's the way it works. Okay, anything else, sir?
All I have.
And one final thing, thank you to Shayla for putting on that poverty simulation. I do apologize for absence, but I had to take my wife to the doctor that day for her, her checkup on shoulder surgery, so couldn't make that one. We'll move right on here to number eight, elected official reports. Who do I have from the elected official family? It looks like Sheriff Hope is heading up.
Morning, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. Had a very busy month since the last time we met, so I just want to share a few things with you. We got through Night in the Country very well, actually. The atmosphere of Night in the Country was pretty mellow. Maybe had something to do with the hundred and five degree heat, kind of took the fight out of everybody. We responded to thirty percent less calls for service than we did last year, and most of the calls we responded to were medical with a lot of heat exhaustion. The hospital and the medical tent out there inundated with bug bite victims as well. In the briefing yesterday, HDH, the medical group, said in years past, they went through four doses of Benadryl. This year, they went through four boxes. So I think that accompanied with the heat really settled everybody down. The event went smooth. One serious incident that's been handled by YPD. Other than that, just, just basic fights and disputes, but very few. Our search and rescue did a great job at the entrances, checking for fake IDs and trying to suppress the underage drinking at the source. So did a good job there. Commander Powell did an excellent job with the operations plan and running the event. Went very smooth. Wanted to share some stats with you. Spoke at the town hall in Dayton on this, specifically to Dayton. In the same timeframe, from this time this year, compared to the same timeframe last year, we've completed about eight hundred more traffic stops just in the Dayton area. So same time period this year, we're at one thousand four hundred and sixty-seven traffic stops. At the same period last year, we had done six hundred and seventy-seven traffic stops. So enforcement action is up throughout the county. What we are, what we just put out for was the sheriff's traffic enforcement team sergeant. Once we get manpower up, we're looking at inundating the county with the traffic enforcement team to take care of our problem areas such as the Hendricks, as mentioned earlier in public comment, and handle those in a more serious manner. So, but our enforcement is a major, I said, eight hundred more traffic stops in the same timeframe. Once this year ends out, we'll probably be over a thousand more traffic stops just in the Dayton area than we were last year, so. The guys are out and about, doing their job. We're currently down twelve positions with one scheduled retirement happening in the next few weeks. One of our deputies has forty-three years of law enforcement, and that he's retiring from Lyon County. He's actually going to work for the state. He doesn't want to put working yet, so. Try to tell him, just pull the plug, but he wants to keep going. So retention is, retention's going well. The sheriff's office, I've got nine in backgrounds right now. So if we can get that down to four or five spots down and continue our hiring practices, by this time next year, we should be in a very, very, very good position. So it's getting better every day. Our four, I went and checked on our four guys in the academy, well, three guys and a girl. They're doing very well in the academy, according to academy staff. Everything seems to be going there. Good there. I know there's a agenda item coming up, and I'll stick around if I was having any questions on that.
Any questions? No? Mr. Jacobson?
So you, I had to harken back to a younger day, but on the fake IDs that they confiscate, bouncing at a bar, we got twenty dollars for every fake ID that we busted. Do you give a bonus to search and rescue with?
Well, maybe we should start. I don't know if our budget can handle it. There's a lot.
Roger that. Thank you, sir.
They're pretty bad, too. Pretty bad internet. If you can't spot them, then you need to go, but they're pretty bad face, so.
Any, any statistics on the underage citations?
Sheriff's Office itself, so we were split. So the sheriff's office handled the venue and the campgrounds. We're in city jurisdiction, YPD jurisdiction with zero arrests and issued two citations.
You?
Yeah.
And that's
A lot of it was handled before it got there. Several of the kids that coached football over the years tried to use fake IDs, so no, they weren't twenty-one, so sent them back, and so but yeah.
See you. Yep.
I'm not gonna say that underage drinking didn't happen, but we did our best to suppress it, and it was, it was evident. So Night in the Countries, the way they've worked their system out to prevent underage drinking has come a long ways since the inception of the event. And they do a really good job along with law enforcement, so.
Good. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anything further? No, we're good then. Other elected officials, do I have anybody that has read their reports, and we're going to appointed official reports. Looks like we have Mr. Homestead coming up.
That home set facility director for the record. Yeah, Andrew said the district court job was well underway. They're a little ahead of schedule, causing a lot of noise for the tenants downstairs and sheriff of test two who's drilling. I don't know how many holes they got to drill for, probably a couple hundred holes they got to drill through that concrete slab and imagine the noise down below. But the demo is almost over. Hopefully by next Thursday, it'll be a little quieter up there. It'd be starting to frame walls and stuff. Mound House, we got a tentative estimate from the architect. It was a lot higher than I thought it was going to be, so we're trying to sipping will some stuff off of that to get it towards manageable and maybe fit into the amount of money that we're authorized for the project. So we'll work on that. Friendly Justice Court addition. They're in the architects busy doing the final, you know, blueprints and specifications, so we can get it out. They're in the the architects busy doing the final, you know, blueprints and specifications off so we can get it out good. So that'll be happening here in the fall probably. And then we've been, we're busy with Night in the Country, getting the fairgrounds ready. And now we're down out there getting it ready for the for the annual fair. So I have any questions?
Questions? You're off.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services for the record. I just want, I have two things this morning. One, thank you to everybody that was able to participate in the poverty simulation. If you weren't able to participate, that's okay. We will do it again. Prior to COVID, we used to do these events at least once a year. And this one was very successful being our first one post-COVID. So I'm very grateful to the volunteers and my staff that helped put it on and everybody that participated. I think it was very successful. The other thing was coming up August seventeenth, we'll be holding a board of health. So we have a couple of agenda items planned for that day, but if you guys have agenda item requests that you would like to see on the board of health agenda, please let me know. That's it. Oh, that you want me, you want me to do that? Um, so. Oh, part we're not done yet. Um, in response to Commissioner Keller's request for that E. Energy Efficient Community Block Grant. EECBG is the initials, I believe. We have submitted the pre-application. I'm working with Doug on that grant application. So while. It might be a formula grant and not competitive, it still is quite the process to receive those funds. So July thirty first was the deadline. We submitted our pre-application on July twenty seventh, I believe. And we are awaiting further instructions. They have the preview for the link to go in. And Doug and I are working on that narrative for that grant. So hopefully we'll be receiving those funds this year. And I believe Doug is planning to utilize that for some HVAC repairs or. Total renovations.
After speaking to the representative from Washington, he he recommended that we go on the voucher system on that. And that I have his contact, so I can give it to you so you can get right in there. He said that there's some. Easier ways to navigate, so you could just talk directly to him and they're trying to make this an ongoing process so that. Once you're in there and get that part done, then as they keep adding more stuff in, you're already in to. To just keep accessing it. So I'll give you that information.
Sounds fabulous. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I noticed too on the consent agenda when going through it, you did nice job on getting some grants and some matching grants for like. One was ten percent, one looked like maybe a thirty three percent and some others. So just hats off to you and your crew for. For saving the county money and getting as much of those resources as possible. Nice job.
Thank you.
Any further questions at this end? No? Thank you. You're up.
Good morning, Taylor Allison, Emergency Communications Manager for the record. I just wanted to share briefly that we did have FEMA site visitors in Lyon County for the last two days. Reviewing all our damaged sites from the March Atmospheric River event and working towards that seventy five, seventy five percent reimbursement for all of our damages. And while we have a long way to go, they were impressed with all the work that had been done to repair many of our sites. Of course, some of those have been damaged since the March event. In recent flood events, so they did suggest, and here are proposals for potential mitigation projects. Improvements that could buy down our risk for further impact from future flood events. And then just a reminder to the community that want to participate in the mitigation process and help us improve. Reducing our risk for future disasters, please participate in the local emergency planning committee. The next meeting is August ninth. We're working through the habit mitigation planning process. And the next meeting will be. Working on a community outreach survey tool where we can capture all that feedback from the public on those potential projects.
Thank you. Any questions? Oh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Taylor, I'm working with FEMA. How many times did you bite your tongue?
Many.
Okay, I just making sure it was okay and that you're didn't get an infection or anything.
No, there's, yeah, it was okay. One was from upstate New York and the other from Georgia. So when they come to rural Nevada, their eyes are wide open at how far. Geographic our sites are and as you can imagine, understanding rural, rural Nevada, so.
Thank you for your restraint.
Anything further? Nope. All right.
Good morning, Commissioner Louis Cariola, Community Development Director. Three topics, but one comment. I'm from upstate New York. My eyes aren't as wide open anymore. I guess in twenty years, does it? First, I'm happy to report that the four residences that were deemed uninhabitable just south of Mason Road. Due to the Walker River flooding are all safely back into their homes. We were able to inspect and confirm. That they all have functioning septic systems. I'd like to thank all of those residents. For following the right protocols and for working with staff. It's a difficult situation. I'm happy to say that at this point it's resolved. Second, County Manager Haskin mentioned the fact that we have that code enforcement workshop coming up for a special meeting. On August twenty eighth, I'll be working with Aaron to get together, to put together some agenda materials for that. I have begun some discussions, but if any of you would like to offer some input before we put it together, I'm of course available. And the third item is our next planning commission meeting is September twelve. And we have been open to accepting applications to replace Sean Keating on the planning commission. At this point, we've only received three and we recognize that. If we extend that time, maybe we can get a better pool of applicants for you to review. We're going to extend that timeline for submittal to August twenty eighth. So that all of the applicants can be put into your packets for the September seven board meeting. So you have an opportunity then to have more applicants. Make a determination for who will join the planning commission. And we'll have enough time then to sort of debrief this new commissioner. And we won't lose any time because essentially they'll be in place for the very next planning commission in September. I will personally make sure that I speak to them, you know, before the meeting to to give them any kind of briefing that they would potentially miss if we did it in a sooner timeframe. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions? On the flooded areas in Mason, south of Mason Road. Are we going to try to get the residents to implement some mitigation for? Like we didn't have time before because the river came up pretty quickly, at least putting berms in or something to help protect their property from the floods next time if we have them.
Well, we we have seen some activity in that regard. The four properties are frankly in different states as far as actual cleanup. I think most notably that the property just south of the bridge. Is dealing with so much silt and cleanup around their property that that's been their focus. But we certainly had that discussion with them. They are welcome to try and protect their properties, but. The truth is, we do have regulations regarding diversion of stormwater and flooding waters from one property to another. So it's not entirely appropriate to ask one property owner to just burn their property. If they're now discharging more water to their neighbor. And we do have to be a little careful about how we make those regulations and they have to submit, you know, engineered plans to demonstrate compliance with our grading regulations.
Well, I just know that there, when the water came up, the equipment couldn't go down to do anything to help protect their property. So, you know, a little advanced prep might work a little better. And if we can get them all to work together. Prevent this from next time. I think that. Be a good idea. I know you're working on that, but it's just something that I hate to see people have to leave their homes and. It was a tough situation. Yeah, it was very tough for for my district. Okay, thank you. Oh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there is no planning commission meeting in August?
I'm sorry. That's I I apologize. I'm more, I look right past that. Yes, there's no, yes. We have a planning commission meeting next week, but the the new member wouldn't have been appointed. By our planning commission next week. So what I meant to say was we're not losing any time on filling the position.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that because unfortunately I'm not going to be able to zoom in to the planning commission on Tuesday.
Okay.
Because hopefully I'm gonna be somewhere where there's no Wi-Fi.
Thank you for the correction.
Any any other? Questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Any other appointed officials? I don't believe we have any. Advisory Board reports. Have any advisory board members here? Okay, we do.
These Tittles, Lyon County Fair Board Secretary. We put a slideshow together for our ARP. Projects that you guys. It'll play by itself. This is the bucking chute project. Cleanup that had to be done. City of Yarrington brought out their skidster and helped us with prepping the posts with get all the concrete off. More prep work done. Shoots being brought in. These are the new gates that went under the existing announcer stand. Volunteers. And then you know, when you start a project, there always becomes more project to that project. And when there's a woman involved. Um, what do you do? We took on the task of painting the whole inside panels and boards in the arena. High Desert Fine Builders put all new plywood in for us. The Copper Queen clampers painted all the panels and plywood. That was their finished job. So everything matches. And there is the finished project. Looks awesome. And then we held our first bull riding for Night in the Country in the new shoots. And it was phenomenal. The asphalt asphalt project. There's some prepping on the midway there down Bender Row, we call it. There's your asphalt crew coming in. Everybody's complaining it's black now. They would have liked it white because it's hot. And there is the finished product down Bender Row and then up around the vendor booths in the main stage. And then there's the completed with the asphalt and the gravel on both sides. And we could have done this without some of our awesome volunteers that stepped up and helped us. With this two month project facilities.
Oh, thank you. The volunteer.
Those Lyon County facilities, City of Yarrington, Fair Board members, Mason Valley clappers, Ted and Jared Brony. Blaine Tittles, Bryce and Mazini, High Desert Fine Home Builders, Nathan Putzy, Circle P Rodeo. Shawn Nelson, the juvenile probation and the night in the country. They were all part of this. Basically, the shoot project. We're all volunteers that came out and gave us their time. We couldn't have done it without their help. And then if you want to look on the next one. So I know.
Any other.
See everybody at the fair this year. Please come and check it out.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Fun for all ages at the Lyon County Fair and rodeo, August seventeenth to the twentieth. Thursday kicks off Kids' Night, button busting, big chase, BMX races and carnival. Friday spotlights the truck and tractor pull, followed by Dancing Under the Stars. The big parade, four star rodeo, livestock show, demolition derby and more dancing take us through Saturday. And Sunday includes open roping competition, but volleyball and the Silver State Youth Livestock Show and Auction. That's the Lyon County Fair, Country Nights and Carnival Lights in Yarrington. They're fun for all ages at the Lyon.
That was our, one of our radio advertisements.
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Just want to thank you and all those volunteers and those people that donated. That's going above and beyond. So. Truthfully, the easy part was just approving the ARP money or. Your work far exceeded anything we did. So thank you very, very much.
Will come out and see us, please.
Same, same. Thank you very much. And I'd say that the ARP money was well spent. The place looks fantastic. Be great now. Great facility. Okay, anybody else on the advisory board reports? I don't believe we have anybody else that I can see. All right, we're going to go down to the consent agenda. Action will be taken on all items. All matters listed into the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board, accounting commissioners, which one action. Without an extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So commissioners, anything you want to pull from the consent agenda? Now, okay, do we have any citizens that have a consent agenda they'd like to pull? Nobody in the public? Then I'm looking for a.
Oh, you do. I have a note on one of them. I just that the there was laid back up on item eleven E. That was the. Minutes for the June fifteenth meeting. Just there was one minor correction there, so. I just wanted to point that out. It doesn't need to be pulled.
And we got that late backup for Smith Valley to Silver Springs, yes.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda eleven A through eleven M.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes five zero. So we'll move to. Twelve A. Do I have anybody requesting a? Brief break. Commissioners, you need a break at all? If not. We'll move on to twelve A, public hearing on planning items. Actions will be taken on all items. Twelve A for possible action to approve the request for a major variance from George Vanish to allow. An accessory building to be located less than one hundred feet. From an adjacent road in the RR twenty rural residential twenty acre minimum zoning district on a forty point eight nine acre parcel located approximately five hundred feet. To the southwest of the intersection of Hoy Canyon Road and State Route two oh eight at fifty four Hoy Canyon Road in Smith Valley, APN. Ten dash six thirty one dash twenty nine PLZ dash twenty twenty three dash zero thirty five. Go ahead.
Good morning, Bill Roth, Senior Planner. First point and item before you this morning is the Vanish major variance. Just quick summary, it's essentially for an accessory building to be located closer than one hundred feet from the property line. The difference between a major variance and a minor variance with the major variance. Any sort of change that goes beyond ten percent requirement. So in this case. Hundred feet is the requirement. If they were go ninety and less. Then that would be a minor variance and that could be approved by the director without the hearing. But they're going to sixty one feet. So that's roughly thirty nine percent variance. And so that's why it needs to go before the planning commission and the board. Here's the property located here. It is an irregularly shaped parcel with those two prongs sort of going off to the southwest there. It's also intersected by public road and also a river, Carson River. And it's roughly a forty acre parcel. This shows the flood map from FEMA. So it is within a flood zone. They will require flood development permit for the project. These are some photos taken on the site by the applicant. Essentially showing the existing house on the property. The. Leach field for the septic system and then the bottom right there from Hoy Canyon Road looking up to the property. Showing approximately where the accessory building would go sixty one feet from there. There is some intervening natural landscaping that may provide some screening. So just summary of the applicant's request, it's to allow an accessory building to be located less than a hundred feet from an adjacent road. So I've underlined here, this is the relative. So I've underlined here, this is the relevant code, but typically the accessory building needs to be behind the principal structure. So for residential property, the principal structure would be the single family house. And so generally you want that to be the most prominent structure that you see if you're looking from the street. Uh, but we do have in our code some exception to that. So if you have larger properties, this is a forty acre property. Uh, as it says here in the underlined area for plots that are five acres or larger, uh, those accessory buildings can be located a hundred feet from the road and in front of that house, uh, if need be. Um, so in this case, as I'll show you, this is a site plan provided by the applicant. Uh, those um, you know, sort of squiggly lines at the top left and bottom right. Those are contour lines. So the closer they're together, the steeper uh, the terrain is. And so it has some callouts here in red just showing uh, some of the existing structures on the site. Uh, so they have their water service line coming in from the northeast. They've got their existing driveway, their existing house, uh, the uh, leach field area. And then where that proposed shop would be located about sixty-one feet from uh, the property line along Hoy Canyon Road. Uh, the issue here, why sixty-one, why sixty-one feet instead of a hundred? Yeah, as you can see for these contour lines and where the road is located, that there's very little buildable area. Uh, to push it back another forty feet, we either put it into that leach field area or into the house. Um, so realistically, this is the place to put it. They intend to use it uh, for uh, storage of passenger vehicles, perhaps a tractor and also have some indoor recreation uh, for the family that lives there. Uh, this is just showing some elevation. So this is a shop building. Pretty basic utilitarian design. So we do have some findings for a major variance, uh, basically three findings. Um, essentially finding number one. Uh, by strictly applying the provisions of the title requiring it to be a hundred feet would be put some sort of a hardship on this property uh, that represents an exceptional practical difficulty. Uh, is there something about this lot that that allows some flexibility here? Um, so the lot is irregularly shaped. I mean, it's not unusual to have a steeper hilly lot, uh, but with those two prongs being also intersected by the uh, Hoy Canyon Road and the Carson River, uh, there's very little, little buildable area uh, along with the topography. Uh, so they have, you know, basically a strong argument to make here. Um, to have uh, any kind of covered vehicle parking, uh, this is basically where they need to put it. Um, in regard to finding two. Um, this is conditions of that property generally don't apply to other properties. And I think the main point there is that it's intersected by the road uh, and the river. And it has that unusual dual prong shaped design uh, that limits the buildable area. And then finding three is with the project result in some sort of material damage to other properties. So the applicant, uh, you know, they again just intend to store, you know, their own personal vehicles and a tractor, use it for some indoor recreation. Um, it is sixty-one feet rather than a hundred feet, but that still is sixty-one feet from the roads. Uh, and it would be partially screened by the vegetation. Uh, the applicant is here and they, they may want to speak or have some uh, ability to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, um, and it would be the Walker River, not the Carson. Yeah, that's all right. I just want to make sure that. I know, just, just for the record, I want to make sure that we got that. So uh, Mr. Thanish, um, would you like to make any comments or your agent?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, you're okay?
Really, just to introduce ourselves, Nate Robinson. Very nice person.
Okay.
He's a really nice person.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Um, Commissioner, questions? Commissioner Jacobson?
Uh, yeah, thank you Chairman Hockaday. Um, just a real quick question, sir. Whether we approve this or not, does this create a slippery slope with precedence and future requests that may cause litigation if deny, if we deny those future projects but approve this one? Um, I know the findings indicate that topography and all that that were, that are being considered here. Um, but I know it's difficult to anticipate possible future litigation, but I'm just curious if we approve this one and we don't approve some down the line. Is the, is this a slippery slope?
Uh, but with each proposal that came up in the future, it would have to be reviewed individually uh, in regard to its own merits and whether they need to findings. Uh, in terms of what's already gone in that area, the applicant included uh, some, a list of other sites that have a workshop. And I think a workshop like this or, you know, tougher car parking area is pretty reasonable. Uh, it falls in line with the world residential use to have some place to store a tractor as well. I don't know if you have anything to add. It's our very strict for variances. They are very rare. I think this is my first time sixteen plus years as a planner. Uh, and so uh, but I think with this particular project, because of its unique shape, it does need those findings.
I appreciate, I appreciate them.
Mr. Keller?
Yeah, I was going along the same lines because of they're showing the examples of other ones and now they're going to be on that list. So it's going to create a bigger list of precedents.
Well, it those, those ones that they showed, those were not bar through variance to my understanding. But we haven't gone through and researched each one. I believe a lot of those were just permitted.
So I don't know the history of this property or anything. So did you just put that building up or is this a longstanding residence there?
No, it's, it's a recent building too. It's pretty many fact, you know, we had a wreck. It's much, much smaller in ways. You, you actually, a lot longer. Oh, my name is George Stannis for the record. Um, yes, the, it's a pretty manufactured home. We had a wreck on the property a few months back.
So why wasn't this part of the overall plan back then?
Well, we, we had originally intended, and I may let Nathan speak to this, we originally intended on, on placing the shop at a different location, but it's, it's very steep adjacent to the shop, which we would have required a great amount of fill to allow ingress or egress to the shop. And the lower area where, where the driveway would have landed from the shop, it's uh, it's pretty well saturated. Uh, there's, there's an irrigation ditch that runs directly above of the property in way of that area. And there's, from what I understand, there's a fissure in the, in the uh, in the canal. There's a, there's a fault line that runs right through there. And so it's pretty well saturated, the uh, the ground below it.
Yeah, the only reason why I'm bringing that up is I've seen it in other areas, especially Silver Springs, uh, where people buy the irregular properties or whatever, knowing what they're buying. And then come in and expect us to give the variance and everything else to it. And we end up getting stuff on properties that we don't want. That's why we have the variance. We're in locations where they're not supposed to be. So the house could have been in front of the the building situation if you would have planned it all together. So that, that, that's just something that I'm. You're kind of doing this all the same thing, but you're kind of saying, okay, now there's a, there's the well and there's the septic. So therefore the, this only can go here. When you had a chance to change it before.
May I let Nate, Nate speaks to this one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nathan Robinson, uh, professional engineer and for the record, and, and I can say that this is one of the most unusually unanticipatable lands that we've ever built on. We drilled a four hundred foot well where, so we can put the septic system in another area. That well was dry. We had to swap it. We built the house with a shop that we planned uh, based on sort of a limited topographic information. We were trying to do this. You know, the Lion County not too much, don't over design way. And then when we built the pad for the, for the first shop, which is a little smaller than the one we're proposing now, um, it, it really does look like a plateau tabletop. You, you can't drive up into it practically. And I think those things were unanticipatable without a lot more effort in, in the beginning. And then of course we had a really wet winter and you go to that place and it's a beautiful wetland, standing water. Now you dig a hole and six inches down, you got a pond. And that condition, what did not exist when we first did the topographic mapping in the dry year. So um, I will mea culpa that I wish I had anticipated some of those things. But when we were planning the home, uh, the original design seemed reasonable and it became less so with every factor major. And um, last note is that this is in a flood zone. So per Lion County code, we have to be a foot and a half above the adjacent topography for any finished floor elevation. And when you get a steep site, that's the highest corner. So if you're a foot and a half above the highest adjacent natural ground, you can end up nine feet above the highest adjacent on national ground pretty soon. And that's kind of what happened here. So we're forced to go below the gentlest area we can to avoid that exact situation.
Well, thank you for the explanation. Being in construction that that kind of fills me in on what, what you went through. Uh, also because it's a shop, does that allow for uh, bathrooms and stuff like that in there? Restrooms? Okay, so that's, that's been the permitting stage, right? I know we ended up out in Silver Springs. We ended up with people putting those shops in. They were bigger than their house and they end up uh, actually putting places to live and stuff in the shop. So that's what I was just cautioning about. That's all.
Any other comments, questions here? No. Public comment? Don't see any public comment anywhere. And I'll look for a motion on twelve A.
Miss, miss.
Oh. Uh, Commissioner Keller, let us hand up. Go ahead.
I'd like to vote to approve the request for a major variance from George Thanish.
Awesome. Okay, we're going to reconvene. And then recess until 11:00. So that we can figure out what the problem is and get back, get our power back. So we are recessed until 11 o'clock and then we'll have a further announcement at that time as to how things come about with the rest of the meeting. Thank you. And go. It is now 11 o'clock. We are going to reconvene the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, August 3rd, 2023. And we were on public hearing on planning items. I will go ahead and reread. For possible action to approve the request for a major variance from George Danish to allow an accessory building to be located less than 100 feet. From an adjacent road in the RR20 rural residential 20 acre minimum zoning district on a 40.89 acre parcel located approximately 500 feet to the southwest of the intersection of Hoy Canyon Road. And State Route 208 at 54 Hoy Canyon Road in Smith Valley, APN 10-631-29, PLZ 2023-035. And ask make sure there are no further county commissioner comments. No further public comments. And we have a motion that was started on the table from Commissioner Keller.
Again, I move to approve the request for a major variance from George Danish to allow. An accessory building to be located less than 100 feet from a adjacent road in the RR2. Zoning District on 40.89 acres parcel, parcel located at 54 Hoy Canyon Road in Smith Valley, APN 10-631-29, PLZ 2023-035. To include the findings APNC and conditions 1 through 9 in the application. Second.
Okay, so we have that motion from Commissioner Keller and the second from Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes slide zero. Moving to 12B. For possible action to approve the request for a master plan amendment from Mark and Cheryl Jones. To amend the master plan designation from agriculture to rural residential on a 21.6 acre parcel generally located to the northeast. Of the intersection of Madison Way and Artesia Road at 60 Artesia Road in Smith Valley, APN 010-081-43, PLZ 2023-020. And staff report.
Sorry, Mr. Roth, since you're gonna do the presentation for both, we will need to read the second item into the record as well.
No, we're going to read the second one in if you're going to approach both of them at the same time. 12C for possible action to approve the request for a zoning map amendment. For Mark and Cheryl Jones to amend the zoning map designation from Title 10, District of RR5, fifth rural residential 20 acre. Minimum to Title 15, District of RR5 Rural Residential 5 acre minimum on a 21.60 acre parcel generally located to the northeast of the intersection of Madison Way. And Artesia Road at 60 Artesia Road in Smith Valley, APN 010-081-43, PLZ 2023-021. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. So again, for the record, Bill Roth, Senior Planner. So this is the site here. The applicant has a professional planning consultant who's going to give a much more. Detailed presentation, so I'll try to go pretty quickly. It's a 21 acre site. Looked it in Smith Valley. And this is the overall proposal to amend the master plan from agriculture to rural residential to amend the zoning. From what was under our old zoning ordinance, Title 10 RR5 with 20 acre minimum. To what is under our current zoning ordinance, Title 15, which is also called RR5. But this RR5 has a five acre minimum back in Title 10 that RR5 stood for Fifth Rural Residential District. So basically, the proposal is to switch from agriculture to residential for the master plan and zoning. To a zoning district under current Title 15 that allows for smaller parcels. Again, this image will be in the consultant's presentation, but on the left is the current situation on the right is what's proposed. So the blue parcels, those are designated, the master plan is rural residential. And then the green is agriculture. So basically showing what is to the south of five acre rural residentially designated parcels. Is pretty much what the applicant is proposing, though they do not have a submittal today for a tentative parcel map. They have a conceptual parcel map, which I'll show later. But today is just for the master plan and for the zone. This is just quickly from the master plan, Chapter 3, showing from agricultural to rural residential. You can see in agriculture, the minimum zone in there 20 acres. And then if going for rural residential is what's proposed, allows for those five acre minimum lots. Essentially for formats and ranchettes. So basically what the applicant has today is a farm matter ranch at on a 20 acre lot and what they're proposing to do is. To create three additional pots out of that. So total of four rather than one on five acre minimum lots. This is the zoning similar. The green is the rural residential, the pink purple is agriculture. So going from the left over to the right to do something similar to what is done to the south in terms of. Allowed for parcel map with the smaller lot sizes in the future. This is our zoning consistency matrix. Again, just showing the current zoning in red. The fifth rural residential district with the 20 acre minimum and over to the left under our current Title 15 that's proposed is the five acre minimum. So this is just a conceptual layout, so no layout is being approved today. This is from the applicant, just showing that they would meet the minimum lot sizes and now they might do it should they submit a tentative parcel map in the future. So there are findings for master plan amendments. I'll just go over them very quickly. So. Any sort of master plan change, especially when you got a master plan that is fairly recent from 2020. You know, typical for finding C there. You know, is there some sort of new information or new change that maybe wasn't considered at that time? And a good reason to update, you know, if conditions change in some way. And so I think the applicant will go into that in more detail in terms of irrigation and the feasibility of for them forming their parcel. And then just going down to E. It's not a sort of new type of development that's going in, be similar to the five acre lots that are to the south. It's not a leapfrog development, meaning it's not skipping from rural residential past agriculture and then create another rural residential. It'd be contiguous to what's to the south. And the zoning similarly, again, this zoning would only proceed if the master plan amendment is approved. The zoning as what's proposed to the RR5 would be consistent if the master plan is changed to rural residential. Terms of public services, again, you know, it's basically adding three. Three families or three units where one currently exists. So it's a minor increase in terms of density. It doesn't introduce a new use to the area. There is already five acre minimum residential lots in the area. So staffs available for questions. Again, the applicant's consultant has a thorough report.
Questions? No, yeah. Okay.
It'll take him a minute to pull it up, but you know, this would be just to advance this, like go back.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Roth. Thank you. I want to thank community development for all the preparation and facilitation they do for these meetings. As well as the planning commission who was here last month and of course, the board of commissioners who are here today. As well as the public participants because engagement in our community is a process in this community and all communities. So. I want to, this is very similar information that you just saw. But I want to bring in a map that shows this is the master plan map for the Smith Valley land use area. And the location of this. Project is just this circle. Right here. It's right there next to, you can see the areas on the residential uses that are already in place and the areas are the. Agricultural zonings. So predominantly, Smith Valley in particular has a lot of ag land. And there are little purple areas that are rural residential with various assignments. So. Just wanted to point that out as a place to begin. And here I have. On the top, we have the agricultural use and below it, the proposed rural residential use. And on the right side, we have the existing. RR5 20 acre and below it, the RR5, five acre. Minimum for the lower right, pink and green. Document. So I have boiled down the key ideas and each of the findings here. So we're going to talk about how it has to be consistent with the master plan. What the compatible land uses are. The response to any change in conditions, the requirement that there be no adverse effects as well as the desired pattern for doing. And so we'll walk through each of these with some examples to go to look at. And so finding A is consistency with the master plan where the applicant has to demonstrate that the amendment is in substantial compliance. With and promotes the master plan goals, objectives and actions. So in this case. I focus in on the first few slides on the Smith Valley community values. One of them is viable agriculture and as we'll see. The applicant has had challenges with promoting and continuing with viable agriculture. So. We are going to propose and as Mr. Roth mentioned, there's the option to have a ranch at a format for someone who can. Perform agricultural uses such as. Would be allowed things like animal keeping, field crops, plant and plant nursery vineyards. With the requirement that the county would monitor. That they maintain certain standards. You can only have so many animals, so many things on that five acre property. So there would be a requirement from the county that no harm happens to neighboring lots and that is part of. The promotion of the. Options to encourage ranching and farming activities. And perhaps a lower impact use. In this option. So. Moving on. Master plan goal two for Smith Valley is the importance of clean water and the water supply and quality. And. The Department of Water Resources oversees all the requirements for wells and the state law and Lyon County Code regulates the treatment and disposal of sewage. Both agricultural and residential uses impact water quality and the productive mix of the two. Offers a potentially, potentially healthy alternative to intensive ag uses versus dense residential developments. So. That the, the goal of maintaining clean water is something that. The whole community values and we agree with that. So. Finding A also talks about having an orderly growth pattern. That the land use plan will guide the growth and development by. Defining appropriate land uses and densities and et cetera for rural areas and farm and ranch. Land as well as suburban areas, towns and cities. And so. The master plan land use is something that is to make these decisions and one of the requirements that we're going to get to in finding B, I believe, is that. It has to be consistent with, has to be adjacent to something else. And so we'll get to that in a minute. The viable agriculture. Again, comes up. To encourage the continuation of agricultural lifestyle, strive to preserve water rights to ensure and continue agricultural potential and these residential parcels are required. To obtain two acre feet of water rights to support a domestic well. And it's potentially possible that agricultural uses would have more significant water impacts. In the future. So. The proposed amendment, this is finding B, is compatible with the existing or master planned adjacent land uses and reflects a logical change in land use. So this logical change in these types of master plan reviews. They look at. What is adjacent to the property. So this one is next to a property that has a similar density, five acre parcels to the south. In fact, they would match in the color purple there. And so the, this is considered compatible. It's compatible. It's also not. An industrial use, it's a commercial use. It's similar to the use that's already in place and it's already established that ag. And this type of use has been getting along together for some time. So. Moving on to finding C. The owner's original intent was to raise hay, but it was impeded by some inconsistent delivery of water to his parcel. And he had quite a few challenges and I want to just point out. How he faced those challenges. Well, certainly everyone in the past few years been experienced some drought conditions. And being at the end of the line, he got less and less water. He had difficulty keeping the crops going even though they went out and, you know, spent time moving things around in the middle of the night, et cetera. So they took action. They plowed and leveled the land. They dug out the ditches to improve circulation. They re-lasered and reseeded the hayfield. They invested in redebating. They purchased additional water rights and installed underground water systems. And they've had other incidents that resulted in some of their valves being removed by others. So. There have been challenges and they have faced them and they are moving forward with what. The master plan allows is this type of application. So that's what we're moving forward with. So the finding D under the master plan findings is that it would not have adverse effects. And so. Moving to this slide. So knowing how Smith Valley is very conscious of the clean water and the potential impacts of septic systems in the area. We took a moment to evaluate based on assessed parcel information, how many. Properties in this area already has septic, how many do they have and how many are allowed? So this is within the. Smith, in the basin that this is in, it permits. 127 equivalent dwelling units. Within that radius. So that's what the radius is. So within that radius, they can have up to 127 units. And what we found in our research was that there are currently. 19 units and this proposed change might bring in three more. And so there would be very minimal impact or adverse effects to this particular development. On Artesia Lane. So the approval of this amendment wouldn't adversely affect the master plan goals, objectives, max objectives and actions. The county and the state have established policies to ensure. Public health and safety and they do enforce them. And the draft septic radius map is one such example where this. Impact would be minimal to this parcel. Finding E is about having a desired pattern of growth. And. Having the orderly physical growth of the county with increments and patterns. If you think back a little bit to the purple. And green map that we were looking at earlier. Those. Purple areas tend to be next to each other. We don't have a purple area in the middle of a green area. We are grouping them and we are allowing that growth in. Increments and patterns and the pattern is the one that's already established and we're attaching to that in this proposal. So. This desired pattern of growth is not, is considering natural resources, geography, expenditures of public services. Because this is just going to be. Cable phone service and power, which is already existing and the properties will rely on well and septic and propane. There will not be a big impact on infrastructure for this development. So. Those are some of the thoughts. On that point. And so based on these findings, we believe they can be made in the affirmative and that this master plan. Can move from agricultural to a rural residential use. So moving on to the zone change amendment.
Can we?
We talked about this or Mr. Roth.
Uh, I just, uh, thank you, Mr. Just procedural question, um, we want to go ahead and do this now or do we? But, uh, to separate them.
It's so. Andrew Haskin, line county manager for the record, um, so you can either. Do the presentations now at the same time, they've both been read in, um, obviously when it comes time for a vote, they will have to be separate now. Um, it, it's really up, up to, uh, how the board would like to handle that.
It's okay with me either way.
Chairman Hockaday, could we ask questions before we move on to the next one?
Yeah, that's kind of what I was saying is that whatever the board prefers here, I mean, I'm good with listening to the second. And then asking questions on each before we take second action. But if you all want to go ahead and break here, take questions. Want to do that?
I, I, I personally, I would prefer that, but I'm with the sense of the board.
Then we'll, we'll let the presentation and ask questions right now for this portion of the first, uh, twelve B invitation. So, uh, you must have a question, sir, or ahead?
Uh, actually, I'm interested in the public comment. So I'd really like to hear.
Okay, um. Mr. Jacob.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Ma'am, what was your last name again?
Oh, Cunningham.
Ms. Cunningham, sorry, um. My hearing isn't what it used to be. Luckily, I'm doing nothing about it. All right, so I have a question. You said they were struggling to keep crops alive. Were getting the water. So when they purchased this land, it didn't come with a full allotment of water rights?
Well, it, they had a downstream, you know, we're talking about underground and surface water, so their surface water was often. Uh, under, it was at the end of the line, so it didn't always in the drought conditions get enough water there. That's my understanding, is that correct? Yes, okay, please.
Mark Jones for the record. When we purchased the land, we had access to a.
Mr. Jones, um, can you state what capacity you're here representing the project?
Oh, the applicant, yeah, thank you. So when we purchased the land, uh, it was absolutely disarrayed. It had, we were under the impression that we had access to this well and we had water rights to that well. And at the time we did, but then through court and everything else, it was a first writer of refusal on that well. It wasn't exercised in a timely fashion, but because the previous owner. I won't even mention his name, but he broke down on the stand and it just, we had to make a settlement. And the settlement was that we continue to use that water, that well when Lot was not using the well. And that there would be no objections to moving water onto that card if I went and repurchased water. Which we did at a major expense, we bought twenty one acre feet of water. Uh, and so we fulfilled our part. There was other things in between there that was going back and forth. It was, it's not a pretty situation, but, um. So we purchased the water, we went to move the water and they put it, they contested the move. And so when that happens, water resource people won't do it, no matter what, they just won't till it's all settled. And the thing was holding up, time was, uh, well, use and management agreement. And in that agreement, there was just too many things that had nothing to do with the well and had to give up all my future rights to sue if I find something pertinent. There was, there's just too much crap in there that had nothing to do with the well use. So we went back and forth. Well, in the interim period, uh, the dairy came over and cut my valves off. And so we couldn't get to the access to the water. So on the surface water, we had put in a lot of money putting in underground water systems, we planned on farming. And they, when in a drought system, we had one point eight seven acre feet of water come to us for thirteen acres. And so all the crops died. There's no way you could water that much agriculture, especially we were raising grass. Not, and that was, it takes a lot more water. So, uh, for two years, we haven't been able to water, uh, with surface water or, uh. With the well water or the, because I have still that primary well. So what the, uh, Bureau of Water Resources has recommended I do is move that agriculture water to my personal well. And I thought that was the stupidest thing I ever heard. So we, we're actually dropping our well now a little bit in that area, find water sometimes for the domestic. So they want me to pump twenty one acre feet of water out of my domestic well and just have a, uh, tracker on it. And I said that I, I don't want to do that, that makes no sense because the neighbors are not going to appreciate me trying, throwing down and it would be wasting the water, where would I put it? You know, so that's the water situation that we're going into.
Chairman Hockaday, I think I just got more confused. Um, so. So. Trying to understand this. First of all, it, I mean, I have water rights infirmly and it's my understanding the dairy can't. Cut off or keep delivery of your water, surface rights. I mean, I've never heard of.
So, so we're back in court here soon. But the problem is, is both, both attorneys on both sides filed paperwork wrong. So that's if you go back to, go back to the drawing board, so that's why I'm there.
Well. I, I need time for me to recoup, so go ahead and answer some other questions.
Do you have any other questions?
Not, not, not yet.
Okay. All right, then. We can go ahead and, uh, on this issue, since we've moved on to commissioner comments for this, we'll go ahead and take public comments on item twelve B. And we won't take any action until we get done with that. Now, I do have a couple of comments when we get done. You deserve the right to do that.
My name is Russ Wright. Most of you know that I still live in Dayton. Uh, several months ago, this commission met with fellow commissioners from, I believe, Doug, uh. Churchill County and perhaps Nye County and the sole subject of that meeting was the water. The issues of water and water rights. And at that meeting, somebody from, uh, probably a cubicle in the fourth floor below the surface of the earth. With no windows, it come up with, uh, statistics and every water basin. In Churchill, Lyon, and I believe Nye County, whatever the third county was, were over allocated. In Dayton, it was. Apparently to nobody's alarm, it was something like fourteen hundred percent over allocated. I, I'm ambivalent as to whether you pass these, uh, issues today or not. What I am curious about is you can only get so much water out of the hose. Doesn't make any difference how much water is promised to come out of the hose. You turn the spigot on and only so much water will come out. This gentleman has allocated a certain number of water rights and he was only, uh, available to him eleven percent of that allocation. So it doesn't make any difference if he has twenty acre feet of water allocated or two hundred and twenty acre feet of water. If he can only get eleven percent of it, then somewhere along the line. The math doesn't work because you can't continue to over allocate and give him more water than is available to receive. So in considering this, I think that if he's only allowed, if he's only available eleven percent. What's going to be available to the folks that live on three additional lots? Whether they're promised acre feet or gallons per minute or whatever. If you can't get it out of the ground or get it out of the ditch, it's all basically irrelevant. And a ranchette or twenty one acres, it's not farmable, probably dividing into four, five acre parcels that's still not farmable.
Thank you. Reset. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Jim Keninger and I'm a resident of Smith Valley. Uh, this has been described as a ranchette. Uh, it's been talked about as viable agriculture. The, what this gets down to, the water rights. Is that the owner, the current owner didn't do due diligence before he bought the property. He would have found out that he's at the end of the colony ditch and that doesn't run water very often lately in our drought. He would have found out that his well on his property that he thought maybe was his well was actually owned by the dairy. And he's been in litigation with the dairy back and forth. But it really gets down to the fact that he didn't do his homework before he bought the property. It's not the county's job to bail him out. He shouldn't get this change in, uh, the master plan. I was on, uh, the master plan committee, I was actually the director or the chairman of the master plan. A few years back and if you take and pass this master plan amendment. You're going to undercut our master plan because the argument is just because he's across the street, not adjacent to him, but across the street from. Five acre parcels, he should be allowed to go to five. Well, if he goes to fives. The ranch around him will say, hey, we just sold all our water to Head Bay Minerals and we don't have any water. That'd be the, the, uh, dairy and the dairy is on the market right now for fifty million dollars if you're not aware of it. And, uh, they would, I say, we want to develop, we'll retain two acre feet for each parcel. But we're, we're right next to this guy and he did it, we want to do it. And that'd be the domino effect. I sent all of you an email showing how Smith Valley has broken up. And Mr. Jones should have come and done, tried to do this. Just two years ago or three years ago when they were doing the complete new master plan. And, uh, I'd like to reserve the right to come back when you talk about the zoning change. Thank you.
Morning, Leslie Sonae from Smith. This request is basically all about the lack of water. Most farmers have water woes at some time, but most farmers would also, uh, have done due diligence as to their water and historical production before buying any property. The why the applicant does not have water for his hobby farm should be explored and considered before a decision is made. As there's much more to the story, I would encourage you to go to the Department of Water website and read the eighty seven page protest that was filed. It will give a little more detail than the applicant gave today. There, it also contains a document from his escrow papers where he did in fact sign acknowledgement that there was a right of refusal to the water on the property. But in general, wherein all of this is weight and consideration being given to the wants and needs of the community. The master plan specific to Smith Valley indicates that the Smith Valley community does not want any more egg land listed or lost to development. Basically just request you deny this application because there's really no valid or legitimate reason. To change the master plan and open that door, uh, as Mr. Keniger said, to other land around to say now we're next to fives. And at some point, there's a line of demarcation everywhere and that was made clear in, in the master plan. Thank you.
Hi, um, this is Judith Harker from, uh, Wellington. Um, I actually recommend that the Board of County Commissioners consider a motion to continue items twelve B and, and twelve C on the agenda. In order to give staff more time to consider, um, uh, recommendations. And to allow for more public con- uh, comment and possibly to request resubmission of these applications to the, uh, planning commission. In particular, clearing up some of the confusion about the water issue is very important. Uh, and I, I, there are a couple of things I need, I think need to be brought up. The land use plan, uh, map shown, uh, on pages two oh six, two fifteen, two twenty three, twenty, two twenty four of your packet. And actually, it's the one that shows the green and the blue blobs and it shows, it shows, um, um. The recommended, uh, change would be from the green, uh, currently for the Mr. Jones's parcel. But it also shows parcel, uh, adjacent to that incorrectly. That parcel, um, should not have a blue rectangle showing RR on it because, uh, that parcel. Um, zero one zero zero eight one dash four two to the east of Mr. Jones. Um, is in fact all green and is all ag. So, you know, what shows up is two blue, uh, things with the green in the middle. Should actually just be show Mr. Jones's blue parcel. The, the map, the zoning map, uh, slide is correct and the zoning maps, uh, on page two twenty one, two twenty two and two twenty six. Do show the correct shape of this parcel. It's a one hundred and one acre parcel. Um, and, uh, with this correctly represented as ag land on the, on the, uh, the land use plan map. Mr. Jones's request to change to rural residential stands out as more of an anomaly. Because it's the only kind of blue blob on that side of, of Artesia Road. And this incorrect information was also presented to the planning commission and may have played a role in their vote. Um, Mr. Jones's parcel was also mentioned as having a single family residence. In fact, there are two residences, the original ranch house was built in, uh, nineteen sixty five. And, um, Kim Stewart built the second house in nineteen ninety nine, five thousand square foot house. Um, if this had been correctly represented, it may also have affected, affected the vote. And we've seen similar incorrect information. In fact, there are two houses and two septic tanks on that property already, two wells, as I believe. And so it did making four lots would just cut off the one residence that's already existing into a separate parcel. And there'd be two new houses and that, you know, just to correct that misconception.
Three minutes you're up. Three minutes you're up.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to come back and talk to the second issue as well.
Hi, hello, my name is Jeff Honeywell, um, I'm representing Honeywell Land and Livestock Company. We're not exactly adjacent, but we're close, we're about half a mile north of this project. Um, and I'm also representing our twelve family members and their, uh, their children. We like the current twenty acre designation for Jones's property, we think it should stay that way. Reducing the parcel size would set a precedent, uh, in our area, which is, as you saw on the map, it's green, it's agriculture. Um, and it was interesting that Judith, uh, was talking about that other blue parcel being shown incorrectly. Cause that was my understanding as well, it's one of Lot's pastures. And, uh, let's see, so with five acre parcels, there are a lot of problems that come with that regarding, um, what we do. We raise cows, calves, horses, sheep, goats. At any given time, we might have a hundred to twenty two hundred animals on our ranch. And, uh, with five acre parcels, there'll be four, four times as many people. In our experience, more people mean more dogs. And, uh, mind to think about that, that thing, because I like dogs, I'm sure you all do too. But what a lot of people that would move into there wouldn't understand that dogs are pack animals or predators. And, um, so that makes it really tough to, way they can harass, kill, injure livestock. That's one reason that the master plan wanted to have agriculture kept as agriculture and away from, uh, development. Also, uh, fire danger, uh, increases with more people. Recently, I think three years ago, we, there was a gentleman that moved in, he started a fire, his burn pile and he left. And it burned down right to, to our property. Luckily, there was a fire break and the fire department there is good, it was a good fire department, so we were okay. Um, and then water's been mentioned several times, I have a little different take on that. I feel sorry for Mr. Jones and all of us down there that have had to endure the drought. I mean, at eleven percent, what do you do with eleven percent of your water? But that was drought, that wasn't. And you, you know, that's nothing any of us can control. But the other thing that we do need to consider is that, um, this is all delivered in the colony ditch, surface water is. And it's been our experience that when you get smaller parcels like this, it's almost impossible. In fact, we won't deliver anything less than half a cubic foot per second. And that's too much water for a five acre parcel, so there'd be people wanting a quarter of an acre foot or something like that, we can't, couldn't, couldn't do that. So it's a practical consideration that they would have to set up some sort of a, uh, way to deliver that water for these people. I don't know if that's been considered here. Way to deliver that water for these people. I don't know if that's been considered here. It seems to me that there's a natural boundary already there. That we should keep the five acre parcels to the south of Artesia Road. Our, Artesia makes, makes a really good, we can all see it. It's recognizable. Anything north of that. It isn't already variable, very varied. It should be kept twenty acre parcels. So anyway, thank you for listening and I may not want to talk on the next issue.
I'm Jana Bliss Honeywell from Smith Valley, from the north end of Smith Valley and. Is this a microphone? So I am. I am a stockholder in Honeywell Land and Livestock Company, which has fifteen hundred acres. Right to the north of Mr. Jones. There's, there's a little. Few acres in between and then. My grandson has six hundred and seventy-nine acres, which is also in that north area, right north of. So if, and then I have another two hundred and forty acres on Burke Drive. And so if you add all those parcels that you, if you start. Proving five acre parcels, the fifteen hundred acres that are in Honeywell Land and Livestock Company would be three hundred five acre parcels. My grandson could have a hundred and thirty-five five acre parcels. And then over on Burke Drive where I have two hundred and forty acres. We could have forty acre, forty-eight five acre parcels, all of which would change the whole. Demographics of Smith Valley and. So this zoning request would allow Mr. and Mrs. Jones to split their twenty acre parcel into five acre parcels. This would not only create four times the population growth, but also cause a problem with their water rights. The colony dish is designed to deliver water to much larger parcels of land than five acres. The Jones property is across the road from a five acre subdivision called Pinon Estates. Which contains forty-five, a forty-five acre lots. This subdivision was originally developed by Ellis Ferris. At the time, years ago, there was no master plan and the zoning was in the original purchase agreement. At the time, I was familiar with the planning commission and they were not going to approve that subdivision, but it, it. Came to be because of, of it was in his. His purchase agreement. The reality day is that allowing this type of zoning change to happen. Would result in a drastic change to our lovely rural Smith Valley. The charm of this valley is enhanced by several large open spaces that agricultural properties provide to the landscape. These open spaces also provide habitat for deer. And for the many migratory birds such as geese and ducks. A five acre parcel is not conducive to passage.
Three minutes you're up.
I have a timeout. So can I, can I say a few more things?
Got to cut it off at three.
Let's see, wait a minute.
You said, I think you made your point. Thank you for your patience.
Any other public comments online?
Good morning, Wendy Loomis, Smith Valley resident. Um, you've heard from several Smith Valley residents, six, I think, maybe seven. And there were seven hundred and twenty in Smith Valley. So this is a very small portion. And the residents have a fear that this application will set a precedent. And this may answer your question earlier, Chairman Jacobson, that. This will not set a precedent because the Lyon County Master Plan approved in twenty twenty is very well written. It requires many steps, findings and conclusions that ensure a precedent can never be the outcome of any one single application. Each application is unique. The applicant must comply with many steps. A preliminary roundtable meeting with the Lyon County staff offers guidance to the applicant, which we did. Advising what must be included to meet the master plan requirements. A lengthy detailed application process ensuring the pertinent and unique facts regarding the request are then reviewed. The planning department, community development team, consider the application and its most unique components. They then offer their staff report as they did. In this application, five findings were reviewed. Each finding was addressed and supported by evidence, facts and conclusions. After review of each finding, the Lyon County staff reported noting this finding is met. The Lyon County Planning Commission is well served and protected by the Lyon County Master Plan, as is the Lyon County. As are the residents of Lyon County. No two applicants will ever be identical. The likelihood of setting a precedent should not be a concern. While a small representation of the seventeen hundred and twenty Smith Valley residents fear a precedent. Protection of the Lyon County Master Plan is covered. Residents can be assured that guidance from the Lyon County Commissioners, Lyon County Planning Commission, Lyon County Planning Department. And Community Development Department and their staff. Supported by the process established in the Lyon County Master Plan. Prevent the future outcome of a precedent because each application is unique. Thank you.
Further. Comment, no further public comment. Further commissioner comments. I know that.
In Nebraska, in Lyon County, manager for the record, it's that map on the. I don't normally address public comment, however, there was a couple of statements made that the map that was shown was incorrect. This is the official map. It does show the same that was in the presentation. The piece there where my. Excuse me, the piece there where my mouse is, that was the piece that was in question. The official map does show that that is rural residential. So. I do want to just make sure that the record is clear on that, that the board has the correct information.
I just had a question for the presenter, right? He wrote down your name, I didn't. Miss Cunningham. So on the one slide you showed a proposed. Subdivision or the cut, the four. The four parcels, did that show? Show that you were cutting those houses off? Those two houses that are on the property. There's two residents on the property. Would one of those end up on another?
Because one of the reasons we wanted to make that design was to see whether it's possible for all those parcels to have their own parcel. I don't know when or how or what the applicant might do with, when it comes to a first land division map. At this time, I don't think he has any plans to proceed. So, but it is possible. To make four parcels and that's something we did, that's part of why we made that image.
I just, it was presented that I just had that question. I know it's not part of the. Of this.
I believe we included all the septic on that property in that analysis that we showed previously also.
And there was a concern over a ditch, the colony ditch or something that was going through the property on one of these. Public comments that we had, was that on easement or is that just to that property? Was there?
You have upper and lower colony. The ditch itself.
If you could say your name again.
The ditch is served by all of us on top there. And then what's left over actually will go down to Honeywell's land and it feeds into our irrigation dishes. But I think there is a little confusion on the water. There's such a thing as ditch water, ground water. It's two different things. So when you buy, we were, when I purchased my property, there's a hundred percent ditch water. And people will think that if you come in and buy a piece of property, you're supposed to know all the water rights and all that stuff. That's crazy. Because I can almost guarantee it that nobody in this room knows all the water right law because it's very, very complicated. And so. I don't want to get people saying, well, you only had seventeen acre feet, yada, yada, yada. No, we had a well and we had ditch water. But the ditch water intermittent, the groundwater is fixed. And that's why the water situation, so.
Yeah, I was, I was just concerned over that because surface water right issues are completely different. If you're at the end of the ditch. Your chance of getting it is, is none, or if you go to the well. That's a different, different, different pale water. And also on those opinion estates that were. Below, are those sold out or?
They are sold out. In fact, the Honeywell's own, several of them. And so they are developing slowly. And, and just to make, I also want to correct something on the map that we showed. The blue side was zone for residential. That we saw there, however, it's been converted back into or lot bought it and turned it back into ag land. And I don't know if the zoning changed or what. But that's why that map pops up in, in the county. So I wasn't trying to be deceitful. That's just what pops up.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Any further commissioners? Okay, Commissioner Henderson, then I'll wrap up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank our staff, Mr. Carriola. I had some questions regarding that one parcel as well, and I appreciate the research you did and the, the information that you gave me. You know, a lot of work, a lot of work went into creating this master plan. I mean, it started. Yeah, before twenty twenty. And this board actually finally approved the master plan in twenty twenty-one. So it's been in existence for two years. Everybody up here in, in the audience probably has heard me say time and time again. When we are looking at tentative maps. That if it is in general compliance with the master plan and the underlying zoning is correct, we really cannot turn it down. This master plan amendment is different. This is one time. When the neighbors don't like it is a good reason to deny this. Their comment made, there were seven or eight people out of Smith Valley commented on this. I got a lot more emails than seven or eight people. And not one person was in support. Every email I got was, was opposed to this. Yeah, I'm, I'm a strong believer in property rights, but sometimes your property rights are subject to the terms and conditions that are set in the master plan and the zoning. And I'm, I'm not in favor of this. Thank you.
I, I had a question. I did want to know if this does in fact set any kind of precedence. And for me, this is a really tough issue because I am a, a strong supporter of property rights. As long as it doesn't injure anyone around you. The water, I did some research on the water and what's going on in Smith Valley and what's happened over the last hundred years. And it seems like there won't be more water coming. And. With that, if there's never going to be enough water for ag use, then I'm wondering why we. Don't allow this. Why, why keep it in ag land use if there's not enough water to support it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The other comment I wanted to make is I, I shared the concern. With the residents down there that if, if this goes through and we grant it. Then the next five acres is going to go, the next lot's going to turn into five acres. I can see the creep. So I, I understand their concern and I share it. Thank you.
Okay, so my final comments basically are, whenever I look at an amendment to a master plan, I would think. We ask the community to look at everything in their community. And what they would like to have in the master plan. And they spend hours, days, plenty of time of their life working on the master plan. So when I look at an amendment and say, okay, we've got a lot of volunteer time working out this amendment or this plan. If I went to that group in the past and asked them, what do you think about this? Would they say, great idea? Or hmm, no, we've made up our minds. We've set up our established ag areas and residential areas. So when we talk about precedent. We have a situation where we're looking at changing the master plan at this point. To accommodate one farming business versus. The rest of the farmers that are out there. Okay, so the rest of them say, we've got bad years. We're going to get rid of our property. We're going to zone it five acres. And we're going to have that fifteen hundred acres turn into three hundred new parcels. So I, I have a problem with setting that precedent of allowing one. Farm to subdivide into five after it's already been set up in the master plan as agriculture and then moving on. With the possibilities in the future. So that's, that's where I come from on this issue. I just can't find, find it in me to change ag to residential. I think that's, Commissioner, okay, we got Commissioner Keller.
So I want to speak a little bit on that too, because what I'm hearing from the public is that they want to keep it in ag. But most of that public is owned by a certain ranch or a certain group. And they also own a subdivision right below it, if I hear right, parcels there. Also heard that he can't, he can't get water and he should have known better when he bought the property. But how do you keep it in ag when there's no water to the property? So, so it's kind of saying you want to keep it nag, just don't water it. That doesn't, doesn't work real well. The other pot is to, to subdivide. I like the idea of subdividing those two houses. Off, separating those down in the future and that gives them the opportunity to be able to do so. We're talking about not. Believe you me, if you come up here with fifteen hundred acres to subdivide, that's going to take quite the process. It's not going to be setting a precedence to. Divide five acres into. And twenty acres into fives. I'm, I'm looking at what is the best use for this land? What is this property rights? And to me, to try to have a dry farm. Compared to be, you know, if the town's going to grow or anything else. To me, you have to have some, some lots. So. I'm leaning toward letting him have his property rights because I'm not seeing the, the way that it could be staying in ag.
Any other further comments? Well, we've had.
Be happy to make a motion.
Yeah. We've had our comments and we can look now if we want to. Wrap this up, we can do a motion and move on to twelve C as necessary. So do I have a motion from the commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I move that we deny the request for a master plan amendment from Mark and. Shayla Jones to amend the master plan designation from agriculture. To rural residential on a twenty-one point six zero acre parcel generally located. To the northeast of the intersection of Madison Way and Artesia Road at sixty Artesia Road in Smith Valley. APN zero one zero zero eight one dash four three, PLZ twenty twenty-three dash zero twenty.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Okay, it's, uh, three, two. Motion passes for denial. Um, because of that, we don't have twelve C zoning. So we are going to move on. Move on to, oh, Commissioner. I'm sorry, uh, county manager.
Sorry, Andrew Haskin, line county manager. You would need to do, uh, take action on twelve seat, but, um. You should know that. Um, it's because the board did not approve the master plan amendment. The, the zoning is not consistent with the master plan. The proposed zoning is not consistent with the master plan.
So how are we going to proceed forward then with twelve C? We don't have a vote on it because twelve didn't pass. So.
We still. We just need to make a motion.
Just make a motion to move out of.
Public comment still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commissioner. Uh, public comment.
Again, Jim Keninger, for the record. Appreciate the first vote. And I realize that, uh, this is kind of a moot point. You don't get the first one, the second one doesn't happen. We don't need more five acre parcels in Smith Valley at this time. Thank you.
Anything further? That's the case, then we will move on to a motion for denial on that. Oh, we've got, oh, yeah. Comment?
So we can talk and say again. I just want to make everyone aware, especially staff that Artesia Road, as Jeff pointed out. Spans Smith Valley, goes across the valley from west to east. And, um, there are no five acre parcels north of Artesia Road across the entire valley, not. Um, on the west side of the valley, there are five acre parcels on the margin of ag, ag lands, rocky and infertile. It's the best use of land for housing. But to take prime ag land in the central part of the valley and turn it into housing. Flies against the master planners and, and against, uh, uh, sense. And, um, the master plan wisely sees, um, using that first class land as, as agricultural. The one great violation of this principle was that five acre subdivision, the pine, um, pine ran, Pinion Ranch Estates. That is cited as being south of Mr. Jones's parcel. There are producing, it's the one case in the whole valley where there's producing land to the west of it, to the north of it, to the east of it and to the south of it. There's ag land. It's a little island of five acres, a little of a lot of ag land. And, um, whether you call it checkerboarding or leapfrogging, it's an anomaly. And the staff report uses this previous mistake, in my opinion, as a precedent to justify adding another square to this checkerboard. Um, and, and let me, let me read this, for example. From the, uh, staff report, as the proposed parcel is contiguous with another similarly designated rural residential parcel, it would not result in a leapfrog during development. Well, that's because the frog is already leaked, you know, that's forty, that, that other five acre parcel, uh, subdivision is already there. And this, uh, represents a significant intrusion of small parcels into the RR twenty and ag north of of, uh, Artesia Road and staff needs to consider not just this much, but the whole valley across the span of Artesia. And this really is, uh, an anomaly. Thank you.
Can you please state your name for the record?
Judith Parker. A resident of Smith Valley.
All right, anything further?
Uh, first off, I don't have to say I'm disappointed in you guys. Because your master plan has provisions for change. You put it in there. I didn't. Your zoning has, uh, provisions for changes. It's the law. You put it in there. I didn't. And now you're not even honoring the rules you put in the law. We started this thing doing exactly what you were supposed to go into a roundtable. They had no issue with it. Then we did all the money to file and do all this stiff, this stuff, and they came back with a positive uh, on the project. Now you guys are, are putting in personal opinions. The public does not change the law. The law is written in black and white. But you sit up here and change the law. That can't fly. You, Dave, had made the comment that you don't believe in change and you don't want to ever see the agriculture change. You shouldn't be able to vote on this. You already should refuse yourself because you were a major public. Huh?
Take me to court. You want to do that?
You know.
Hard to me.
I guess not attack my share. I guess you didn't hear the preacher this morning.
Mister, uh, Chair Hockaday. Give Mr. Nads.
You made these comments at Academy. So I don't, I don't know why you're thinking I'm attacking you. You're the one that put them out there. So, uh. You can't have a, a procedure. And then when we follow everything and spend the money and, 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 and to follow that. And then you guys come up here and say, well, you know, the public doesn't like this and I don't like it. We have a right to maximize the potential of our property, which will never be ag. It just can't be because we can't get water, the groundwater to the ag. Just can't be. So I will have a dry ranch. I know people have ran, rang your phone. It's three minutes? Is it, is it already three minutes? I'm the applicant, so I'm trying to, I just sort of, so I'm just saying this. If you're going to have policies and procedures, follow them. Don't just willy nilly say I don't like it. Because now that sets us up into a litigation type situation. When you rule against something that somebody has done A, B, C, D, and E. Not one of you have said I didn't meet those jurisdictions. Not one of you. It's just personal opinion. We met the, the, uh, requirements. And that's what should be taken into consideration on the board. Because that's the way the county wrote the rules. And if you don't like the rules, change the rules. But for you to sit up here and just say, well, they know that, well, I don't like it. I've heard, you know, this and that, this and that. These people don't own farmland. You know, they got twenty acres. But they don't, then it's not farmland. And it's not the five acre residential. So I'm just saying is, if you're going to have rules. Follow them. If you're not going to follow them, change the rules. Period. Okay.
Any further comment? I think that is time for a motion to go on with this one. I have a motion on twelve C since we already have the outcome.
Mr. Chair, I move that we denied a request for a zoning map amendment from Mark and Cheryl Jones to amend the zoning map designation from Title Ten. District of RR five, fifth rural residential twenty acre minimum to the Title Fifteen District of RR five rural residential five acre minimum. Uh, twenty one point six acre parcel generally located to the northeast of the intersection of Madison Way and Artesia Road at sixty Artisan Road in Smith Valley. APN zero one zero dash zero eight one dash four three. PLZ twenty twenty three dash zero twenty one.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I have a discussion on the motion itself?
Go ahead.
Because, because we didn't pass the first one. On the second one. I'm a little confused on whether or not, uh, because my, my opinion's still the same. But now that I don't have that zoning, then I would have to vote affirmative.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So, um, one of the findings and one of the requirements under, uh, county code for, uh, zoning map amendment is that it is compliant with the master plan, land use designation.
So I'd have to vote affirmative because it isn't compliant at the moment.
It is not. This project is not in compliance with the master plan.
So the only reason why I'll be voting affirmative is because of that reason.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Harrison and a second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So. Twelve C is, uh. S five zero. And I believe that, uh, we supposed to take a break for lunch from, uh, noon till twelve fifteen to allow some staff to go to other meetings. Is that correct? County managers? All right, so we are going to break for lunch until twelve fifteen. And the time now is twelve oh nine.
Skip, whoa, 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 not twelve fifteen, one.
One, one, I'm sorry, one fifteen, make a correction there, one fifteen. More than six minutes lunch.
Back to lunch.
Is your mic on?
Calling the meeting back to order. For the Lyon County Board of County Commissioners. Uh, August third at twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty three. Uh, we got down to twelve D and I'll read that for possible action to approve the request for a conditional use permit from Mr. Darrell Loom of Lyon County School District to allow a bus yard, commercial coach office building, vehicle maintenance building, bus fueling station and an employee parking area at an existing educational facility in the RR five rural residential five acre minimum zoning district. On a sixty acre parcel generally located to the southeast of the intersection of Spruce Avenue and Topaz Ranch, or sorry, Topaz Estate, Topaz Street. Got them all mixed up. In Silver Springs, APN fifteen dash one thirty one dash twenty six, PLZ twenty twenty three dash zero thirty one. So. May I move on with that, sir?
Good afternoon, Bill Roth, Senior Planner. For this afternoon, we have a proposal by the Lyon County School District to relocate their bus yard. The Silver Stage campus shown here. So the, uh, uh. Hash marked box with the red star, that's the proposed location. Uh, if you go to the other side of the street to the west there, you'll see the existing bus yard. Um, the existing bus yard. Actually, this is a street view showing the proposed site uh, for the new bus yard. And this is a street, street view showing the existing bus yard. So the existing bus yard, uh, does not, you know, have a fueling station. That's something that is proposed with the new bus yard. Um, one thing, just to go back, that existing, uh, bus yard, the, the buses were getting, uh, fuel from the, uh, uh, county facility up on Graham Avenue. So when this went to planning commission, uh, you know, part of the concern was with the new bus yard being located closer to Ramsey Week's cutoff. That there'd be the potential for more bus traffic under Ramsey Week's cutoff. So they recommended a condition of approval, which is included in the staff report. Uh, that the district do, uh, make their best effort as practical to maintain the current route. Uh, but it's noted in the staff report, um, which they've agreed to do. Uh, but as noted in the staff report, uh, the hopefully the, the traffic should be less with this new proposal to the south. Um, because they won't need to go to that, uh, fueling station on Graham. They'd have it on site. Uh, so just to get back up here. So this is the overall proposal. So it's a new bus yard at an educational facility. Uh, we have twenty five bus storage spaces and forty employee parking spaces. So, uh, for those twenty five bus drivers. And then there would also be, uh, two employees and, and a proposed, uh, commercial coach office building. And approximately two employees are estimated for the maintenance building. So they would have a surplus of onsite parking for those, uh, personal vehicles of those employees. Uh, and then of course the forty bus park, or the twenty five bus parking spaces. The fueling station and the wash pad. And a conditional use permit is required for, uh, any sort of expansion of an educational facility and also for commercial coach buildings, uh, in the RR five zoning district. As shown here on this slide. Uh, so this is a site plan from the applicant, um, with the, uh, red arrows that staff has added. Uh, so the proposed driveway on Spruce, uh, the project has been referred to the county road department. Uh, they didn't have any concerns about adding that driveway there. And then just going clockwise, uh, the bus wash pad that's proposed, the bus storage spaces, the fueling station. And then with this next slide showing that forty space employee parking area. The bus barn or maintenance building, the office building, and then again, that driveway is Bruce. Uh, these are the elevations of that fourteen hundred square foot office building. And these are the elevations of the vehicle maintenance building. And be located behind that. Uh, there are findings to be made in, in relation to approving a conditional use permit or reviewing one. Um, the project is consistent with master plan policies that are supportive of adequate school facilities and access to schools. Yeah, it wouldn't generate vehicular traffic for the road. It cannot accommodate. As I said, it's been reviewed by the road department. Um, and in terms of traffic flow with, as conditioned by the, recommended by the planning, uh, commission, they recommended condition of approval. Uh, they would maintain the existing traffic pattern that is used for the bus yard that's diagonal across the street. Uh, would be subject to building review to ensure, uh, be safe to public health and welfare. Um, staffs will be able to answer questions and Justin Sand, the applicant's engineer is on Zoom. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioners? Public comment? Doesn't look like we have any, uh, anything to worry about on this one for questions. Let's, uh.
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion, uh, considering findings A through G to approve the request for a conditional use permit for Lyon County School District to allow a bus yard, commercial office, uh, coach office building, uh, vehicle maintenance building and bus fueling station and an employee parking area at an existing educational facility in the RR five zoning district on a sixty acre parcel generally located to the southeast of the intersection of Spruce Avenue and Topaz Street in Silver Springs. APN fifteen dash one three one dash twenty six. PLZ two thousand twenty three dash zero three one.
Have a second.
Condition. Oh, yeah, send with conditions one through ten.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have the, uh, motion by Commissioner Jacobson and a second by Commissioner Henderson. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. We have a five oh passed on that. And thank you for your presentation. Uh, thirteen regular agenda. We are going to jump down to thirteen D so the sheriff can I guess, answer questions here that you're.
I think he wanted to be here for it.
Okay, you want to be here for the thirteen D for possible action review and adopted resolution requesting Nevada Department of Transportation reduce the speed limit from sixty to forty five miles per hour on Highway fifty in Dayton from Fortune Drive to uh, La Fonde Avenue. And this was requested by Commissioner Hendricks. So. Commissioner Hendricks. We also have backup on that.
Um, I think Andrew can explain most of it. Um. But this is something that's been re- requested by the public repeatedly clear back when I was on the planning commission. And so I chose to bring it forward for those people.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager for the record. So in your packet is the proposed resolution, um. It would be to lower the speed limit from sixty to forty five miles per hour, um. Through Dayton out to, um. La Fonde, um, and Fortune Drive. So basically where the forty five is now, all the way out, um, past Fort Churchill Road. Um, is what is proposed. And so, um. I know that the, um, advisory board and, um, Dayton also supported a recommendation. It was on your board agenda last meeting. As a, as an advisory board report, sorry.
Yeah, I did see the advisory board report and, um. We have any commissioner questions on thirteen D?
A question, we have comments.
Comments. Go ahead with comments or question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support this, but I don't agree with it. I don't think it's a speed limit that is causing the accidents. It it will, I, I will, you know, admit that it does increase the severity of the accidents. But the speed limit or the accidents or the crashes, or not accidents, crashes are caused by inattentive drivers and people getting patience. But since the Dayton community wants this, I will support it, but I don't think it's going to do any good.
So. I agree that, uh, something has to be done with that. We brought it before us many times about, uh, access management on the highway. And it's something we have to accomplish and get it done. Uh, I'm not going to support this one. I'm not going to support this one. To me, it's a Band-Aid on a bigger problem. And I don't want to do a temporary thing. Temporary solution that's going to carry us down the road. To where we have to undo what we're doing right now. I know. End dot is, I believe there. I looked at the STIP program that they have going. They've got a ten to twenty nine million dollars going in in two thousand four. To road surface maintenance, I guess. Think that's what it is. At that time, we need to work on the high Ts and stuff like that. I'm looking at. What we have, what we designed to go through Silver Springs and Stagecoach. We have Excel lanes, D cell lanes. And all the rest. That eliminates that, that. That conflict, I think, a little bit better than lowering the speed limit. When you lower speed limit, it adds to the congestion. Just like if you go through a construction zone, everybody tightens up. Soon as you're out in the, in the the regular zone, everybody kind of loosens up. There won't be as many openings for those people on those roads to jump out in front of the traffic. Every time that I have one of those people pull out in front of me on the traffic and I I go through there quite often. I went through there twice yesterday. And every time someone pulls out in front of me, I look in my rearview mirror to see who's going to hit me. And it's always nobody behind me. They're impatient, they don't wait. This, no one's breaking the law or adding to the problem on the highway. It's the other way. And. Also got some other issues with the lowering the speed limit. We've got people that have bought out in Silver Springs because that's at the farthest reach they have as far as commuting. And now we're going to slow them down till they, or they even have a farther commute. Now that goes all the way to the store. We have to go to the store. So it takes more time, everybody. I know we. On the Parks Department, we're looking at how much. Windshield time people were putting in and the cost to the county, putting slower, more miles behind a windshield. So that's another impact. We talked about all the impacts that Dayton requested and I, and I don't think this is going to solve the problem at all. But I do think we have to solve the problem. But what about all the consideration of everybody downstream? They didn't go to the Silver Springs Advisory Board to say, hey, do you think that should be slowed down so that we, you got a business here, you gotta. Go to end where our doctors are all in Carson or farther. Have them go down to Douglas. I mean, the hospital definitely let's slow down people. I'm sure anybody that's pregnant would love to slow down and. Take their time getting to the hospital. So. To me, it's just not the, not the time. I don't think there's been enough public comment. I I think other people have, should have say if we're going to do something like this. Especially the other areas that are affected.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I see Ms. Utterbrink online. I'd like to hear her thoughts. And then also, I see our sheriff sitting back there. I'd love to hear. Sheriff Pope's take as well. So we'll start with Ms. Utterbrink, I guess, if she's on.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners and Chair. Um. What I can tell you is that. We will end dot. Will be coming to the Lyon County Commission. On your September twenty first meeting with our Deputy Director Tedford, and we will be presenting to the board. An upcoming project we have through Dayton on US fifty. Unfortunately, I'm not at liberty. To go into too much detail right now, but I'm sure. The county manager can also attest to this. We've been meeting, discussing our upcoming plans. Which do include. Signals. At multiple locations. Reconfiguration of the roadway and a reduction of the speed limit to forty five miles an hour. With this upcoming project that will be in the next couple of years. But Deputy Director Tedford will go into greater detail about this at the September twenty first meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further?
I I will say, Andrew Haskin, for the record, I will say that we have had multiple meetings with N dot. About their future plans for Highway fifty and. No. That's why we've scheduled the. An update from them. For the meeting in September.
Sheriff Pope.
Well, good afternoon, Sheriff Brad Pope for the record. I know, I know we're all looking for a fix to the fatalities and to the traffic accidents on Highway fifty. I don't either support or. Go against this issue. But I don't know that reducing the speed limit to forty miles an hour in this zone. Is going to accomplish what we wanted to accomplish. I'm not a speed expert myself. I know N dot's done speed studies. They have experts in this field. What I see happening from a law enforcement standpoint is. Law abiding citizens going forty miles an hour. And the people that were used to doing sixty dodging them, they're going around them. Actually causing more of a. More, more of the possibility of an accident than. And what it was in a perfect world, if everybody's going forty miles an hour, it'd be great. Where we do see the more of the accidents is people pulling out in front of. The east and westbound traffic on Highway fifty. Just happened to me the other day. Traveling east on Highway fifty, guy comes out of Maverick, goes over three lanes. Slam on my brakes, far off the city behind me. Light him up, pull him over. Just an impatient driver. And I don't know if that would have changed. But I was doing sixty or forty. I think it still would have happened. The pedestrian that was killed. That was hit by the truck. Whether that truck was doing sixty or forty, I don't know that that would have mattered either. Stopping that vehicle in that short notice. But if you guys pass it, Fendot changes the speed limit to forty, we'd be more than happy to enforce that law. It's the. Way the branches of government work. You guys write the laws, we enforce them. So. I'm not for or against it. I don't see it accomplishing what we want. I don't know that N dot's going to give us an answer. Immediately, I believe their plan is a. Over the next several years. If there was a quicker solution that that we could add now, that would be great. I don't know that it's forty miles an hour in that zone. Well, I'm gonna try it. Well, I'm gonna see if it makes a difference. We'll enforce the law one way or others, but. I'm just, I'm just not sold that that would, that would prevent any of these accidents. But like Miss Sanders said, if the community wants it, she's representative of that community. She's here speaking her mind on behalf of that community. That's what she's elected to do. And if that's what they want. We'll be more than happy to enforce the law.
Commissioner Keller.
Well, since N dot's coming, I'd like to. Suppose that we. Just back on that agenda back after we end on. Speaks, but I also wanted to ask Colleen. I was looking on N dot, your crash data. And the only thing I could bring up was the two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. Do you have an updated one or that we can get?
I've actually put in a request regarding this data. I know Commissioner Hendricks requested this, so we are working on that to get more up to date current data for you. Between Fortune and La Fonde, I believe, was the request.
Thank you. Yeah, I was noticing that on the previous years, two thousand sixteen, two thousand twenty. External distraction was one of the fatalities and it was outside the vehicle. One that was drug involvement. One that was. Leaving the lane, drug involvement, physical impairment. And then some of the other accidents fell asleep, fainted, fatigued. Had been drinking. Ran into a horse. None of those things would have mattered, the speed limit. So that's why I'd like to think this thing through and do it right. We've done things through planning. Throughout history here that we keep making the same mistake twice. And to make that a boulevard, we're going to just stop the county at the county line. To me, it's a, N dot's own. What they're, what they're there to do is connect communities. And interstate and interstate commerce. That's going to slow down. The the commerce.
Chairman Hockaday, if I may. Yes. I appreciate Ms. Hendricks bringing this forward. I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Keller, if I heard him right. If I didn't. Mr. Keller, Commissioner Keller, please correct me, but. I would like, I would like to postpone possibly writing this letter until after our September, the second meeting in September meeting with N dot. And then that would also give. The Stagecoach Advisory Committee and the Silver Springs Advisory Committee a chance to discuss this as well. But like I believe Commissioner Henderson said, I'm. Open to. To the board's favorite flavor on this one. Thank you.
I would have no problem with postponing this until that meeting as well. And letting Stagecoach and Silver Springs speak up on it, too.
Mr. Chair, I I agree. In fact, the conversations that. You've been listening to. Yeah, it is. Pat, the conversations that we've been having is kind of. Actually making me change my mind about supporting it. So I I'm in favor of postponing this.
Sheriff Hockaday, I see we have Gina Lee on from the Dayton Advisory Board on with her hand up.
I couldn't hear what you said, Gina.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, I was just going to make a comment to that. Age myself here, nineteen seventy, I had a traffic accident investigation class I took back in law enforcement degree time. And the problems are the same. Okay, same stuff. Lowering the speed limit doesn't seem to work. Because people ignore it, you know, there's a suggestion for most of them. So I honestly believe we should move this to when we can talk to N dot. And explore all of the options. As Commissioner Keller said, there's a lot of things we've got to think about and. You know, throwing a Band-Aid on a major wound. You know, I have a problem doing it, but I don't think it's going to have any effect since the accidents are not really caused by them. People going at fifteen miles an hour faster.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just one more comment on this. And, you know, I've been involved with within dot for a number of years and other. Transportation agencies and committees. And one thing that's kind of constant that comes out of that is they, they keep telling you that the speed limit should be set within five miles an hour what people are driving. Because we're going to drive that anyway. So. Just, just a comment.
You're right. Okay, so. Just looking at. The public comment here, which would be Gina Lee, your comment, please.
Gina Lee, for the record. Yes, this is, this has come, there's many people in the community that for in the Dayton community that favor this. And we don't believe that it's going to eliminate accidents. What we do believe is that it will eliminate fatalities, many or most of them. Any of the, any of the things that have been mentioned. You know, driving under the influence or hitting a horse at forty five miles an hour, you're going to have a different outcome for the person in the vehicle. Then at forty five, then at sixty. And that's just physics. So that's why we're keen on having it, having it lowered. In addition, when N dot completes their, their actions that they're planning in a couple of years. They're going to lower the speed limit to forty five. So all we're asking is to go ahead and lower the speed limit. We still want N dot, N dot to do the, the remediation on the road that they're planning to. And I also support you waiting until after you meet with N dot. To bring this back again and discuss it again. But as I said, the issue is to reduce the fatalities. We don't believe it's going to stop accidents. But it will reduce fatalities. Thank you.
Any other public comment? If not, I think we've got a suggestion to move this. To the second meeting in September.
Do we have to make a motion or can it just die?
A motion to continue would be best.
But but do we want it the second meeting in September or the first meeting in October? So we have time to digest what N dot.
And ask for added information if we need to, because we might not get it all at that meeting.
Right.
So October one would be fine with me if, if the consensus is there.
So we have a motion to continue.
Motion to continue item.
Hang on, I got. Thirteen D.
Thirteen D.
Thirteen D.
Thirteen D to the October, first meeting in October.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion to continue item thirteen D to the first meeting in October. And we have a second, that's a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So we have a motion pass for continuance and that's five zero on this vote. We're going to go back to thirteen A. And that's for presentation only, a presentation from the Utilities Engineer on the Status of the Utilities Department of Projects with Kishore Panda.
Good afternoon. For the record, Kishore Panda, you're clear. Since we last reported in March. I'm going to give an update on the equalities projects, the status of all these projects, what happened during the last four times. So here is the summary of all the projects right now. Within the Utilities Department. We have two projects that are in the pre-planning or pre-design and planning stage. They are Highway fifty, Dayton Valley Road, your replacement project phase two. And the other one is Silver Spring GID. A frequent disposal preliminary engineering report. There are no projects in the design. We have four projects that are under construction. They are Aspen Creek Rapid Infestation Bays. Your lift station to replacement, ten mile hill tank. And rolling a plant based for expansion part. Since March, we completed two projects. They're basically. Some engineering evaluation and study type projects. They're in the category one. There's your model development and sit camp down geotechnical assessment. So we completed these projects during the last four, five months. So next slides, as usual, I give some additional details on this project. This is Highway fifty, the CO replacement has two project. As you know, we have been changing up the two easements. For close to. I'll say probably over a year. So far, we are successful in getting an easement from the. Sinclair Gas Station, which is one part that we are trying to do the construction. The other property that we are. We are basically in discussion for a long time, which is Sabria's properties, which is on the. East side of the Dayton Valley Road. Next to Highway fifty. So since we reported in March, there has been no progress, but. As of last week, we heard that things are moving. So hopefully we'll be getting an easement soon. So as soon as we get the easements of these two properties, we'll move to the project to the design phase. We got the approval in financial year twenty twenty three, about seven hundred, seven point six million dollar for this project. But because of this easement, we are not able to move this project for the last of most of the year.
Mr. Chair.
No.
Mr. Panda.
Yep.
Are you optimistic that we will reach an agreement to get an easement? Or what's your hangup? That's, that's, that's my question.
Yeah, well, until these things are not closed, we cannot say for sure, but we have a positive. Outcome out of all our discussions we had. We, we know that there are some challenges on the owner's side. That's why they didn't come up with some other discussions. But I think last week we came to know that they're willing to bring that again to the discussion board.
Yeah, because these other alternatives here with. Without the easement are just going to add way too much money to this project.
Yeah.
And for. That to happen. Well, it's not going to happen. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm not against publicly shaming people if I have to, but we're going to let that one little piece of property. Cost the Dayton Utility Rate Payers extra money to complete this project.
You are absolutely right. The other options, they're pretty expensive. And there are also a lot of easements involved. In this option, we have only two easements, but if you go for other alternatives, we have more than five or six property owners we have to deal with. And just to remind you that this section of the pipe is in a very bad set. And we have been changing this for at least more than four to five years. So anytime we could see an emergency in this situation, in this section of the pipe. They are in a very, very bad situation, situation based on the condition of the pipe we accessed, I think, last year.
Chairman Hockaday, I appreciate, I'm sorry to interrupt, but just on this, with this, that phase that we're having trouble with, how long will it take to? For the construction company? To get through that? Section that's that we're having trouble with the easement. How long will it take for them to redo that pipe?
Oh.
Estimate, I mean, I'm not looking for twenty two days, fourteen hours and thirty three seconds.
Construction, I'll say probably four to six months.
Oh, really? That long?
There are some construction challenges, even if you are chasing that option one, along the existing route. There are some buildings next to the pipelines that we have to be very careful. We also have to deal with the gas station on the other side. We also have to deal with the gas station on the other side and the Silica Gas Station. There, one of the pump is sitting next to the pipeline. So I don't know how long it will take. My guess is at least four months. We need to deal with that part.
Thank you.
If I could.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I think. But
Okay.
We did just to just to comment on Commissioner Jackson, but the the part of the the parking lot actually of the bar, which is what we're talking about, it's not going to be open for six months.
No, no.
Yeah, because that's that's only it's it's a parking lot. It's not that big, so.
Right, right. No, not that particular section next to the bar. I think I'll say probably three weeks.
Yeah. But so we're not gonna be putting hurting that businesses business for six months.
No.
We we might have for a week or so.
No, we try to minimize the business impact. We divert the traffic to the business so that there will be minimal impact to the business over there.
Think I need to go to a bar.
Next one. Our next one is Silver Spring GID Air Supply and Disposal Preliminary Engineering Report. This is an engineering study type project. We we are trying to find out different other options for disposal of air plants on this little plant in Silver Spring. Right now, we feel like the air supply disposal is not sustainable because the way it is disposed is impacting the groundwater as well as depending on only one particular equipment method, disposal method. So this project basically trying to explore what are the other alternatives that we can pursue. One of the alternatives that we are thinking of finding a suitable geotechnical or parcel that we can build a rapid infiltration basin like we did for the rolling a different plant. So we have identified so far three parcels in that next to the airport. So once we get the permission from the owner, probably we'll lead to the geotechnical assessment of that particular parcel to find out whether that is fully capable of doing an infiltration mission or not. So that's the situation of that project right now. Next one. Next project is under construction, which Aspen Creek Rapid Infiltration Baysions. So something you can see, and we are expanding the budget section just to give an update on the how we are doing with the budget and how much we are spending out of the contingency fund that board approved, department director to to approve those kind of expenses to the projects. So as you can see under the budget, we had a six point five million dollar approved budget from twenty twenty financial year. So far, we have spent six point one two. A little bit detail about the construction contract. The construction contract was six point one six million dollar. It included five hundred seventy-five thousand as a contingency amount. Out of which, as of date or June, end of June, we have spent about hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. The reason we wanted to bring this just both to know that in any project, we expect some changes because of some unknowns such as underground difficulties, something we don't match between the engineering records versus has been conditions. So these are the scenarios that we expect some changes into the projects. So that's why we always put typically in engineering projects not more than ten percent as contingency fund to take care of this kind of changes in the project during the course of the project. In our scenario, basically board approved or authorized our department director to take care of these changes in the project. It is not like the contractor proposed some price for these changes, but it goes through an extensive process of review by the engineer, review by the staff, we go through the negotiation process. Then we come up with a final number, then we move to the department director for approval. It is not only always the cost to the project, we also need to save some time for the credit of the project. So this package includes all these works and directives we process so far in this project. They're they're put in the appendix A. So just for you to know, we have processed almost fifteen works and directives for this particular project at a cost of about hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. So those are the details in your packet. If you have any further questions, I I'd be happy to answer that. Um, status wise, this project is supposed to be done, the potential completion to be done by end of July. Um, as of last week, July thirty-first was this Monday. So we, the project was going through all the testings and the commissioning phase. We are happy to note that this all this project completed all the tests and the and the checks during the commissioning process. So this is handed over to the operations and the project is now under the staff running the process. Our final completion is end of August, which we are hoping that some of the points list items contractor is going to take care of within a month. And we close the project as per the schedule by August. I'll go to the next project. Next project is Sewer Lift Station Two Replacement Project. As you can see in that photo, it's a brand new lift station, which we identified as lift station two A. We'll eventually decommission the existing lift station two, which is across the road in Dayton Valley Road. Oh, budget wise, again, this was estimated by our engineer back in twenty twenty with a budget of seven and a half million dollar. Happy to note that we have spent only three point six million so far in this project. Construction contract again was awarded for three point six million dollar that included three hundred thirty thousand dollar contingency, which is about nine percent of the project budget. So far, we have spent about hundred thirty-seven thousand dollar because of all these little water changes done during the process of construction. Um, status of this project, substantial completion is August of twenty-four this month. Construction was done pretty much two weeks back. We are going through the testing phase right now. There is a five days operational test, human testing, all these things basically happened during this phase. So we are hopeful until yesterday that this project will be done by August twenty-four. Unfortunately, we discovered something yesterday with regards to the coating in the way to. So we are working with the engineer basically to identify what is the issue. More likely, what we see today, contractor may request some time extension. If that happens, we're going to bring that to the board for the next meeting. So which is a big issue, the coating may fail, there's a warranty for one year. We are glad that it happened right now, so there's blisters we identified yesterday. So we don't know what's happening right now. So maybe by next week, we'll be able to know what is the next course of action to fix this. Otherwise, the project went very well. It was satisfactory. We are ahead of the schedule to finish this project by August twenty-four with some little things to be done by end of the project. Next one. Next project, project is Ten Mile Hill Water Tank. As you can see, a lot of pipelines along Highway Fifty, which has already been done. The tank, one million gallon gallon tank is under construction right now. Well, I'll go back to the budget first, maybe. Seven point seven point five million was approved by financial or twenty twenty-three budget. We have spent only two point six nine. The construction contract was four point one four. Out of which five fifty was five hundred fifty thousand was the contingency. We have spent only nineteen thousand dollars. All the details are provided in appendix A. Um, we are kind of heading as per the schedule of the project, and we are hopeful that this is going to be wrapped up by October, put in task for the contract. Um, next one.
Mister Chair. Oh, go ahead. Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Panda, this this project's been fascinating. I don't know. I don't know what contractor you're using on this project, but use them again because they're getting it done.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they are kind of, I'll say probably a week ahead of their schedule. Of course, there are other things that we see the challenge in the project that contractor has not seen, which is the control and electrical store. Tank manufacturer, tank manufacturer builder, what you say, they are kind of ahead of their schedule. So this week, I think they started quoting. So as of date, the progress is very satisfactory, and we are positive that it's going to meet the contractual completion date. Uh, next one under construction is Rolling Air Waste Water Plant Phase Four Expansion. Again, the budget was fifteen million dollar approved in twenty twenty. We have spent two point one mostly for the design and the planning of this project. Board approved a contract for nineteen point nine and twenty million dollars in April. That included a huge contingency fund, which is again nine percent or ten percent of the contract, which is one point eight million. We have not started construction yet, plan to issue the notice to proceed on August twenty-eight. We are going to have a reconstruction meeting next week. Construction period is twenty-four months, and this is one of the biggest problems that will consume a lot of staff time, particularly managing the existing operation and agile the construction of the plant. Our next two projects, they are completed during the last three, four months. This is the sewer hydraulic model. This was a software developed to to basically mimic the gravity sewer system so that the model can be used for many different purposes. Such as we can use that for master planning. We can use that for the raw man capacity analysis. We can use that for finding what is the existing capacity, what are the deficiencies in the system. We also can use that for many different operational scenarios. So this project was done in June. The final report was presented to the staff. And I think the engineer did a good job to capture all these things and stuff there. The last project is city dam dam geotechnical assessment. If you remember, Department of Dam Safety identified this dam. And they, they came up with the dam emergency action plan, I think, was done by the county. We hired Dowell to a geotechnical assessment back in, I think, May. No, sorry, few months back, probably a year ago. So the geotechnical study and the inspection report from the dam safety engineer came up with a preliminary response or design or technical rehab plan to take care of those two components. So they estimated about a million dollar worth of expense or cost to that project if you want to fix those two aspects to address the geotechnical deficiencies plus whatever the inspection report came from the Department of Dam Safety. They also prepared a fifty percent design plan set for those improvements in the dam. So that's all I got about the related projects. I'd be happy to answer if you have any questions.
Questions?
Thanks, Chairman Hockaday. I'm not posing that I become your agent, but I think if I was you, next time your contract comes up, I'd fight for one that's based on commission and not so much on salary. But thank you for the update.
Commissioner Keller, anything? Commissioner Hendricks, anything? Commissioner Henderson?
No, just just thank you for the presentation. These are beneficial. I appreciate it.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Going to thirteen B for possible action, authorize the board chair to sign letters of support for the Utilities Department to submit grant application for water and sewer projects the Nevada Water Conservation and Infrastructure Initiative through Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. And David Pruggetta will be, Pruggetta will be giving the presentation.
Chairman Hockaday, Commissioners David Pruggetta for the record. So this is good news. I'm actually coming, not asking for money, but asking for permission to go seek money, granting. So about two weeks ago, we got notified from the state that they're gonna have about a hundred million dollars worth of ARPA money available for water, sewer and stormwater related projects. There's a series of strings attached with it, but for the the projects that I recommend that we submit to, one of the applications, it's actually due on Monday. So I gotta get this letter of approval in order to even apply for these. And I'm proposing that we apply for five different projects. And and the projects were in your summary, but it has to do, one of the projects we're going to be working on on Silver Springs, the treatment plant. We have to upgrade the aeration system for our current estimates are close to eight hundred thousand dollars to this is going to be a permit compliance thing. We're we're gonna have to do it. So I'm recommending that we apply some of this money toward that. The Rolling Air Waste Water Treatment Plant that we all know, the cost escalations have been significant in this project. So we apply some for some grant money associated with that. We've talked quite a bit about a water line in Dayton that catastrophically failed twice and is currently shut down. It's over by the school, by the wastewater treatment plant that we have to, it's currently holding up growth in that area right now. That's just about a three million dollar project that I propose we submit some grant money for. The lift, the highway, the gravity sewer line that Kishore just explained, you know, that's close to a four million dollar project. I propose we submit some money for that. And then lastly, one of the things we've been working on is we have a handful of wells and booster stations that currently don't have backup power supplies. So our plan is to work toward funding those as we move into the future, but this might be a good opportunity to submit question million dollars worth of funding request. So total with the application with the approval, I would submit these. And it's close to just under nine million dollars worth of proposed funding. So even if they propose or accepted just part of it, at least would be some money coming back into water and sewer funds.
You have the letter. I'll sign it right now. Commissioner.
So out of that hundred million, is that Clark County and Marshall County, too?
Well, and I can, yeah, it's it's the state of Nevada, and I can tell you, there's some, one of the big concerns with this is these projects need to be ready to go, and some of these projects for us aren't. But we're close to to starting in the design because as with all ARPA funding has to be spent no later than December of twenty twenty-six. And where my big concern with this whole thing is because now it's kind of late getting it out. Everything that we'd be susceptible to is you put a hundred million dollars of investment infrastructure in the next two years. We're already facing shortages of pieces of equipment, and I think that's going to exacerbate the problem significantly. So there there's, you know, we'll we'll submit it. We have to spend the money first and then get reimbursed for it. But by waiting so long to get this ARPA money funding out, I think it is going to create some problems within the whole state. So if they do choose to fund some bigger projects down south, you know, there's going to be some big infrastructure requests. Right now, like I I I have a total of six, seven generators that I'm proposing for. Right now, the current wait time on those generators are one year. Other people start submitting to it, it could easily put us past the date. So even if we did get approval, we would have to get into the project design and see what the construction times are. So I I just cautiously cautionarily mention it, but you know, any money that state can give us as part of this ARPA funding would be a great thing.
Do they stand on their own or or are you prioritizing? Is are they just gonna give Lyon County? You know, are they gonna stop at a stop?
I wish I had an answer for you. Literally, we got notified two weeks ago, and there's no, what's your approval process? How much money do we have to match? At least when we applied for the federal grants through the community project funding, we got some guidelines here. We don't have any guidelines. So we're just submitting, and you know, most of my submittals would be a typical approach would be we pay twenty percent, they pay eighty percent. I'm hoping there'd be negotiations in that if they had us to reduce a project or something, but at this point, you know, we we can't get clear answers.
Thank you.
Questions at this end? Public comment? Any public comment? Thank you for. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Um, all of this is kind of Greek to me, but it looks like we're behind the eight ball time wise and money wise. And that doesn't seem right to be. Do we, do we know why we're behind the ball timelines or money lines? Sorry, very anti-Jack. And I'm in a stage coach.
Is that there was any more public comment? If not, I'll make a motion.
Okay, any public comment on Zoom? No, anything left in the room? No, I'm ready for a message.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. I make a motion that we authorize the board chair to sign letters of support for the Utilities Department to submit grant applications for water and sewer projects to the Nevada Water Conservation and Infrastructure Initiative through the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. And thank you, Mister Pruggetta.
I second it.
Second, so motion by Commissioner Jacobson and second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Going to thirteen C for possible action, approve the outdoor festival application for Jason D. Seleski and Jean Pierre Seleski. Big Fest to be held on September first and second, twenty twenty-three in Dayton, Nevada, and subject to permit conditions one through sixteen in the staff report. Let me go ahead.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, this item was actually submitted by the clerk treasurer's office. And I yeah, yeah. So the applicants here, the clerk treasurer's office prepared the. Yeah, I, yeah, so the applicants here, um, the clerk treasurer's office prepared the report that's um. That you have, the, the staff report, so I can do the best to answer any questions out of that, or, and I'll give the applicant a chance to speak.
Okay, want to speak, sir?
My name's Jason Seleski. Um, I used to this process, but um, we've done this, this will be the third year that we're trying to do this here, we did the last two years. Um, just answer any questions if you have any concerns. It's gonna be the same as like what we did last year, we have a law enforcement working with us, um.
Commissioners, any questions?
I, just a, just a question, what, what's the genre of the music out there?
We're doing all kinds of, we got reggae, um, rock and roll, some acoustic, a little bit of rap, a little, little bit of everything.
No, he said music, not rap.
We have uh, like art displays uh, for people, it's like a whole artistic thing for the whole weekend, um, I think it's a good thing.
I know it's your requirement for the water. I, I go to, I put on a lot of vents, you might want to add with the heat that we've been getting and it's going later, watch that water.
Yes, sir.
Anything further on that? I have one input, uh, make sure your Secretary of State business license is updated because it expired on July thirty first. The state.
I just renewed that, like, like we're good. Our state license renewed.
Okay, as long as we get a copy of that, be great.
Should, you guys should have it, but I haven't in my.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County manager for the record, so um. If the board approves this item today, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't issue the permit, uh, it's still subject to the condition, so the clerk treasurer's office would. Issue that permit once all those conditions.
That's fine, I just, you know, when I get a packet and I see something expired, I, okay, let's make sure we get things right.
No, I appreciate you checking.
Okay. Thank you very much, we're good.
Can I ask one more question?
Uh, any, yes, go ahead, another question.
What, just a curiosity, why is it called the Pig Fest?
So we actually started this uh, nine years ago, started in my backyard. Um, and we were, we had like, the members of my band all had a birthday in September. So we got a pig, pig on the ground, um, had like three bands or whatever, and that kind of evolved into like what it is now. So we're just trying to check.
Thanks. Alright, any public comment? Have any public comment online? Okay, missions are done, public's done, I'm looking for a motion.
Mister, Mister Chair, I move that we approve the outdoor festival application for Jason and Genevieve Seleski. DBA Pig Fest to be held on September first and second, twenty twenty three in Dayton, Nevada, subject to the permit. Right conditions one through sixteen.
Second it.
Okay, uh, motion by Commissioner Henderson and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, we've already done thirteen D, we're going to thirteen E for possible action, approve, deny or amend a resolution of the Lyon County Board of Commissioners terminating. The declaration of emergency that was declared in resolution twenty three fifteen. Ms. Allison.
Taylor Allison, Emergency Communications Manager, for the record, um, this would be the official resolution to end. Our emergency declaration similar to what we had in the March event, um, we keep, keep each. Emergency incident on a separate reservation number allows us to track um, for those federal thresholds. In any potential reimbursement, we have been under action stage on the Snyder Gate on the Walker River for over two weeks, yay. Um, lucky and happy to put most of those flooding concerns behind us. Everyone is focusing on recovery and cleanup of all the flood damage, so I'm happy to answer any.
Thank you, any questions for Ms. Allison? Some questions? Alright, thank you for the update and um. Resolution, basically, I can just resolve that the Lyon County Board of Commissioners is hereby terminating the declaration of emergency that was declared in resolution twenty three fifteen. With the termination date of July thirteenth, twenty twenty three, and that's just the resolved on the resolution, the rest of it is. And do I have a motion to uh, terminate with the resolve there? Okay.
Make that motion.
You know, I didn't ask for a public comment, I'm sorry, any public comment on that? Didn't see anybody jumping up, so I guess I'm okay on that one. Um, so I do have a motion now by Commissioner Keller, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Commissioner, by, her, um, second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Uh, thirteen F. For possible action, approve or deny a request for one-time funding for the National Center for Public Lands Counties in the amount of forty one thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty nine cents. It be transferred from contingency, this requested by Commissioner Henderson from a previous meeting.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County manager for the record, um, yeah, so this was continued from a presentation and um, discussion that we had. Um, earlier this year, um, at that time, the board had determined that, um, or it asked for the continuance. Because um. The timing just wasn't right for the contingency, and so we're bringing this item back, um. And um, at the request of Commissioner Henderson. I'll turn it over.
But, um, um, thank you, Mister Chair, yeah, we've, we've, we've discussed this item before and. You know, the reason why we decided to push it back, because we weren't really sure what all the impacts were gonna be, um, from the flooding that we had. But while we were back at the National, National Association of Counties, um, meeting. At the Public Land Steering Committee, we got an update on this, and there was a lot of good conversation, and I believe both Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Hendricks were in the room to hear that. Um, the initial goal was, I believe, fifteen million dollars to be raised. To date, there, they have got pledges for four point seven million dollars. And I got the update here, there are. Ten, ten of the seventeen counties in Nevada have, have contributed so far, pledged to contribute so far. Um, what this is gonna do is, this money is gonna be invested. The money that that money makes off of interest is gonna be used to fund the uh. National Center for Public Lands Counties, and what is gonna do for counties is give us the research. And, and the scientific data that we need to communicate to the federal government on, on public lands issues. Right now, we know what goes on in public lands, we have the expertise, we don't have the science and the facts. So it, it's, it's uh. I, I think it's a good thing, we could pay it uh, and, and to, to install us if we wanted, I don't care of that. But um, I certainly think this is something that, that we should support.
Any comments?
For commissioners who heard the presentation, is this? Is this uh, money going towards keeping public lands public, or is it? Are they, do they not take a stand on that? What, where, where were they at on that?
Thank, thank you, Mister Chair, to Commissioner Jacobson. Yes, okay, uh, it, it, it is to. To deal with issues on public lands, the thinking is that. The, the federal government may want to impose a regulation or something they do, and. Right now, we don't have the scientific data to refute that, all we have is experience and expertise from people on the ground who do it. You know, so that's what it would do, it would, it would help us to advocate for the positions that. The National Association of County has taken, which, like, well, as we referred earlier to the, the policy resolutions that we passed. Uh, on public lands issues, okay, so this, this study, they'll, they'll, they'll probably pick something a year, a, a, a topic. And do research on it, and then we will have that research so that we will go to argue with Congress or with the uh. Public land management agencies, we will have scientific data to help carry our, our case.
Um, one more thing, Chairman Hockaday, if I may. Um. And it was my understanding in checking my notes and going through my gray matter. That some counties in Nevada. Chose to pay a lesser amount, but yet they still supported this, is that correct?
I, I, I can't answer that. I don't know, I, I know some counties have decided to, to do it in two payments. So yeah, one comes out of one, fills up your budget, one the next, other counties have pledged to allow that one to one year.
Thank you. So this is a, this is usually going toward a broader scope of things, so it's gonna be something that all of NACO agrees on. Is usually the stuff that's going, but the research will be there in case we need something at the local level. So we could reach for the research, but if we need to look for something, but on the bigger level. Uh, what they're gonna go after is gonna be stuff that the whole western region and, and anybody with BLM land. I'm, I'm leaning toward not approving this right now. But I am, uh, I do have a motion that I, I would like to put out there, but I'll let Commissioner Henderson put his motion first. If he's uh, nor does he want to hear mine.
We'll go continue with.
Okay, well, here, let me, let me, before we go down, what my motion's gonna be, if, if, if it's allowed to go forward, will be to. Budget for this for next year for consideration to pass. So I'm gonna, I, we didn't get our stuff from FEMA yet or anything like that, so I want it in the budget, and then we can uh. Do it next year, nothing's gonna happen between the, this year and next year, so that's, that would be mine, but if you have a different one that you want to try first. Allow.
Chairman Hockaday, one more, uh, just question. Um. And this may be for Mister Haskin. Um. Regarding our contingency budget, I'm sure you've had a conversation with Mister Foley. Um, where are we sitting? With contingency and, and some of the unexpected expenditures that we had from the flooding and, and uh. Is this something that? I mean, we should. Talk about. You know, where we're at fiscally, I think at some point with some numbers, are we? Where are we at? Thank you.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County manager for the record, I'd have to take a look and see where we're at specifically, however, we did just start a new fiscal year. So we're at the beginning of that. Um, so with that, you, contingency would start over as a part of that new budget year.
Well. Okay, as we're getting that number, I, um, with that said. Uh, rather, rather than waiting an entire year if we're gonna do this. Um, I would be more amenable to maybe half of it. At a time, of course, uh, finding out where we're at, um, fiscally first, so while I head to Mike, I thought I would throw that in, thank you.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mister Chair, just what, one, one comment on that, while we're talking about money, you have to remember that we got. Money that we weren't expecting from the local tribal assistance, something fun. All, all, all that money went directly to the counties, and a lot of that was due to efforts of the National Association of Counties. So what they are asking for is one percent of that money. So we got over four million dollars, they want a penny out of each one. So that, that's, that's, you know, that, just so that's out there.
So they, they helped get that money, but so did a lot of other people. But then, so everybody would say, I want my one percent too, uh, it, in that money. It states right in there that none of that money can go to a lobbyist. And NACO's a lobbyist, so that none of that money could go there. It would have to come from contingency, it's a complete different thing, my only concern about contingency is it's the start of the fiscal year. We don't know what we're gonna go through, through this year, and we haven't got our money back from FEMA yet, have we? So I, I just want to bring that.
Mister Chair, thank you, just, just one, and, and thank you for that, Commissioner Keller. Um, one, one note, though, that, the, um. The National Center for Public Lands Counties that they're setting up is going to be a five oh one C three. And the money is gonna be kept separate, so they cannot use any of the five oh one C four monies that they lobby on. So it's gonna be totally separate from that, and it's gonna be housed under the NACO Research Center.
Commissioner Hendricks, we're gonna.
This, this is, obviously, they've known about this for a while, why was this not something that was included in their budget with that we just passed? And the other thing is, I too am kind of concerned about what we're gonna get from reimbursements, and. Rather than wait a whole year, I think we could revisit it then if we do get some substantial money back. So that we know that we're gonna be safe for the whole year.
Anything else before public comment? We have any public comment? I don't see any. Um, so we've got a good discussion, I'm looking for a motion.
I can take a swing at it. Mister Chair, I'd like to move that we direct the county manager. To include an appropriation of forty one thousand, two hundred and five dollars and forty nine cents. For funding for the National Center for Public Lands Counties in the fiscal year twenty, what are we in now? Twenty twenty, in the fiscal year, in, in the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So a motion by Commissioner Henderson, a second by Commissioner Hendricks, so.
Question on the motion.
Okay, question, go ahead.
So does that mean that we are approving it just to be funded in the next year? Is that the way the motion is?
That was my intent, yes.
Next, of school year.
Give me just one second.
Okay. You got a second, stop.
Chairman Hockaday, do we take a five minute break while we, thank you.
Back in uh, twenty twenty six.
Agenda, right? My concern was that it's in the budget, so that we can consider it later, so we could strike it from the budget, that's fine, so clarify that. And then second that, or whatever.
Looking for a part, basically, opening a clarification motion. Yeah. Okay, we're back. It's two twenty six and we're looking at the item. Uh, thirteen F, basically, we were looking, we have a motion to approve with funding in next fiscal year.
Yes.
You're up, Andrew.
Mister Chair, if I may, Andrew Haskin, line county manager for the record. So the way this agenda item is worded, we wouldn't be able to go with that motion if that's. The direction, well, I can't say that. It, you know, we can certainly, I can bring back another agenda item at the next meeting. Um, that's similar to that, and we can consider that item at that time.
That's good.
Um, but we could not consider that motion. Uh, under this agenda item today, so.
If you you have Commissioner Henderson would uh, work together with the next agenda item.
Absolutely.
So. Make a motion to put it on the next agenda. Continue the next. It's not continued, it'll be a new agenda item.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, you wouldn't want to continue.
So so it'll just be under agenda request for the next.
Yeah.
We can do that, and then you can just take.
Yep.
Mister Chair, Mister Mr. Charles, I withdraw my motion.
They was uh, withdrawn. And we will take no action on thirteen F. So we will move on to thirteen G. For possible action, approve amended line county administrative policies and procedures one through five counties commission meetings. Amending section twelve B by adding subsections four resolution preparation and subsection five resolution process. Which we talked about and pretty much moved forward on that, but any commissioner comments on thirteen G? Any questions? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Yeah, this is not what I thought we came out of the last meeting with. You know, I I thought that. We had, we had kind of said that, you know, since the question style, we weren't going to put a particular format in. In the uh. In the in the regulation and. So I I I have a problem with this way of presenting it.
Any other comments?
It is what I thought, and I'm, I I didn't get everything that I I liked in there, but I do think I brought it to a point of giving a. Department heads, other people, at least the uh. Blueprint of how to do it, so they can just turn to it. It's also reviewed by you and the district attorney before any resolutions come forward, so. I'm happy with it.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. My only concern with a set format. When I was looking into this is sometimes we adopt resolutions. From other counties, from other entities, whatever. Um, I guess my question then to Mister Haskin is if we adopt this. Will it create a bunch of work for our already overworked staff that could be working on? I don't want to say more important things, but. Kind of reinventing the wheel, and if not, then I support this. Um, if. It does, maybe we could find some compromise. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
If I may address that.
Go ahead, address.
Andrew Haskin, line county manager. So my intent with um, with the wording and that, you know, reading it, I can see how that came across. Where I said the general format for resolution and then I provided was really not meant to limit it to just that. Um, so maybe a better term would have been the preferred format that um, this.
Preferred by who?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, this this format since, I mean, seems to be what we've discussed and. What um, most of our resolutions follow. It doesn't have to be. I mean, I'm I'm open to two suggestions.
I I think, well, well, give me more comfort. It was where it says the general format. Should say one acceptable format, which which leaves the door open for other styles.
That works for me too. Like I said, my intent was not to limit it to this format, just provide some kind of general guideline.
Well, I'm fine with the way it is, but uh. What I was trying to get away from is a whole bunch of different types of resolutions, just something that we had a format. No, uh. Nobody holds you to a resolution to, we're trying to hold it to a standard, not to a certain way. So uh, there's no parliamentary procedure that says this is the right way or the wrong way. None of them say that. They all just say, this is the preferred one that we would like to use so that we have something to to go after. It doesn't make one right or wrong. And to me, that just gives it to like if I'm sitting on staff or or outside entity and I look at something to go, hey, I'd like to do a resolution. Here it is. I just go through it. That's all. That's the only thing that I think we were trying to accomplish. So I'm happy with it the way it is.
I'm I'm fine with it.
Would you want to make a change to? Oh, item four, I mean, you know, if we're all acceptable, that we can add another word or two, and you're happy with that, then. I'm I'm doing whatever y'all want to do.
I can take a swing at it. Go and do public comment.
I just wanted to hear what you were, that word again that you were looking at.
I was just changed the the general format to one accessible format is.
I mean, if everybody's happy with that, that's fine, but.
Or.
I understand both sides here, but you know, it's up to the board here, so. Sounds like Commissioner Keller said if it's okay to change some words, he's fine with it. He's just giving us a general idea. But I'm reading you right on that.
Well, me personally, I'd keep it at a higher standard and keep the standard right, but to me, the whole purpose of it was is just to give a. How to do one, basically, so that. I I think they've told it to the highest standard. That's what you'd want to do for the county. But if we don't, then we don't.
Okay, any public comment? Anyone want to get involved in this? I don't see anybody willing to jump in, so um. I am going to be looking for somebody to give me a motion and we can vote on.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept it as it is.
Except as is, do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have. A motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks. And all those in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed?
Yep, nope.
So we've got.
Three to two.
Okay, so we have three to. The motion carries three to. Okay. Better one passing. Thirteen H for possible action, appoint a member to the Dayton Regional Advisory Board with a term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty three. I believe we only have one person that's applied. Ron Wyman. So. We have any commissioner comments? Any public comments? Do I have a motion?
Mister Chair, I move that we appoint Ronald Wyman to the Dayton Regional Advisory Board with the term expired in December thirty first, twenty twenty three.
I have a motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second?
No second.
A second by Commissioner Hendricks. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thirteen, aye. For possible action, acknowledge resignation from Sean Keating from the Line County Planning Commission. And I believe we. Think there was a letter added to this, so um. Any commissioner comments? Thanks Sean for his work on the Line County Planning Commission. Um, any other commissioner comments? No, any public comment? No, looking for a motion on thirty nine. Are you willing to accept the?
Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion that we approve or accept Mister Keating's resignation from the planning commission.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Resignation accepted, vote five zero. Item fourteen, future agenda requests. We'll start with Commissioner Hendricks.
I don't have any.
Commissioner Henderson.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hock. There are a couple of things. I would like to request for the first meeting in September. Uh, time certain, if I may. Uh, to have Mister Dave Regnan. Uh, do a presentation. By the city of Fernley on the Bureau of Reclamations Truckee Canal extraordinary maintenance project impacts from the project. And uh, the status of associated litigation, please speak to the. To the uh, commission, and if we could get the time certain on that. First meeting in September.
If you can, um, yeah, we'll we'll connect off offline. We can. That after the meeting, we can.
Okay, thank you, and then um. That's it for the agenda request. Thank you.
Oh. You had something?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we we might want to put a item on the agenda to authorize us to attend the Nevada Association of Counties Conference.
That item was budgeted for, so I don't think we need to do an item.
Commissioner Keller.
I have nothing.
All right, I I just wanted to remind um, county manager of the other two. Um, agenda items that we were looking at for resolutions in other counties and also. That we double check on uh, uh, the fire safe briefing with um, Nevels. I think you were checking on that to see when she could come give us a a presentation. And that's about it. Commissioner comments? Uh, Commissioner Hendricks, any commissioner comments?
No.
Commissioner Henderson.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Hockday. Um, first, if there's, uh. I would like to also request that staff reach out to B O R and request them to attend to. Uh, kind of an outstanding. Monthly request for them to show up, and then if I could, if you have email correspondence for just the dates that we've requested that, if not, just. Keep. Start keeping track of when we reach out to them and they uh, refuse to talk to us. That would be great, and then um. My daughter plays college volleyball. I will be missing the next meeting. I hate to do that. I know I signed up for this. Um, but. This, the preseason tournament is a Thursday, Friday, and and so I will be missing uh, the next commission meeting. And for that, I greatly apologize to my colleagues and the public. But uh, I still got to look my daughter in the eyes, so I want to be able to do that face to face than on FaceTime. Thank you.
Permission denied. No, have a good time. Commissioner Keller.
No, I don't have anything.
Nothing? Okay, um, just from the uh, apologize for being out of order earlier in the meeting. Should have um. Sat here quietly. So that's my final comment for the day. Uh, we're going to the final public participation. No action will be taken on any item till the property agenda is. Anticipated, the public participation may be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action afterwards, please print your name. At the clerk's desk, and we do have a public comment to finalize the day, I think. Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to say, um, as a as a citizen of Lion County. And a conservative supporter of the First Amendment. Um, that I appreciate the opportunity for public comment. On. Many occasions during the agenda, including on every item. And I know that it's, you know, it's one of those things that you. You're always wondering, did they did they say public comment or not? I appreciate the the efforts that you make to make sure that the public has their say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I had a request that we're.
I'm just going back to the comment just for a second. Could you uh, send out an email to all the advisory boards? On the traffic safety issue, and what I'd like to know is ask them specifically for how it impacts them. And and businesses, how it impacts them.
Just for clarification, just the stagecoach in Silver Springs one, right?
I would send it to anybody, but I don't know if there's people that are commuting from Fernley through or people that. Are traveling through there to commute to Fernley.
Why don't, why don't we connect offline and we'll talk.
Commissioner Shantay Lassard with Hage for the record. I just wanted to inform you that we will be doing a drill campaign. Um, it started August first, and it will go through December twentieth. So either tomorrow or early next week, you'll see some equipment mobilizing up to the old Mason Valley Mining District. And we'll be taking that campaign, like I said, through December. You'll see between four and seven folks rotating in and out of here that will be doing that. But I wanted to let you know in case you have constituents that call and ask what's going on up there. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience today.
Uh, do we have a closed session today? Close session? No close session, outstanding. Any further comment from missionaries of the republic? If not, meeting is adjourned at two forty two.